This is our, um, our special board meeting and, uh, we're gonna go right from this meeting into our work session. So, but first, we're going to do a roll call. Kinsey? Lynn?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Welch? Um, Nancy is excused. Leighton and Warren?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Okay, six of our seven are present, um, and we're gonna go right into our action items. A is the purchase of Preble High School and West High School scoreboards, and that is going to be, presented by Josh Patch. Take it away, Josh.
Can we get a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Um, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the purchase of equipment and installation services from Dectronics for scoreboards at Preble High School and West High School as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
Right, um, both of these items are related to the November twenty-two referendum. This is a we're purchasing this on the CISA contract, but we're getting, um, better pricing. If we approve in November, saving, I think, about thirty thousand dollars on that. I did want to point out that in addition to the equipment, this is, this is kind of neat. It comes with curriculum that we can then, um, we can use in classrooms for video creation, um, or video production, content creation, advertising, that kind of thing. These are video scoreboards, um, which allows us to generate more revenue than conventional scoreboards. It's kind of the, the way things are, are going here. You will not be seeing a scoreboard for the Southwest project because that doesn't exceed the board's threshold, whereas these football scoreboards do.
Yes, please.
So on the form that we have, it's just a typo where it says Southwest two ninety-three zero one eight. If you look under background governance request, it says prevalent Southwest. That should be West on the attached document. Am I completely on the wrong thing?
Maybe mine says Preble and West. I see that is a type in the table itself. Yes, that is, I'm sorry, a typo that should say West. West is more expensive because the, um, the audio equipment is included in the scoreboard at Preble. That's not a possibility because that would be blaring right into a residential neighborhood. West is situated the opposite way, where, um, the scoreboard faces the park.
Anybody else? Any discussion or questions? Okay. I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next is, um, be awarding of contract for new elementary school architecture and engineering services. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that Somerville architects and engineers be awarded the bid for the new elementary school architecture and engineering services for an estimated design cost of one million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Three point three percent of the total cost of construction as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions? Go, go ahead, James.
Oh, John.
And then, and then, Andrew.
So Josh, what's the timeframe for this project? How long does it usually take for these architectural services to be, um, rendered?
Well, a lot depends on when the capital is approved. The, the hope here is that the architectural and design services would be substantially complete, um, by the springtime. In case this is on a, a spring referendum.
So just to follow up, so you could imagine that this, these services take about between four, maybe four to five months to complete. So if we don't approve because, you know, lack of confidence around the referendum, we're just basically, I'm trying to determine the offset that, what, where we give up, right? We're trying to accelerate the development so that we can hit a twenty-five entry or a twenty-six entry.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things here. So you're looking at probably about six months worth of work, five to six months worth of work here, represented in these proposals. If, if it's not approved, that would potentially, um, delay timelines on construction of a new elementary school. It also, um, which is out inflationary costs and, and things like that. So things get, uh, more expensive.
Andrew.
I got my, my question is similar, but maybe a little more technical. Are we? Is, is that, um, is there any understanding that the bids are locked into the building being of a certain amount? In other words, if there is a, if, and no one that I know of has proposed this yet, but if there was a proposal to do an elementary school of a different size, that wasn't the same amount of money, is that percentage-based bid still valid and binding?
That if, if the, if the board provided substantially different direction, I think it would be appropriate to, to repost the RFP.
Okay, so you're saying, no, you don't, if, if for some reason the board had some direction for the a new elementary school that was quite a bit different from that figure, we would have to repost or renegotiate or something?
I would have to talk to Jake about that, but I think that that would be the course of action that would be appropriate.
Any other question? Go ahead, James.
I just want to revisit because I don't think you, uh, I didn't ask the question correctly. Given the timeframes that we are operating under now, what is the target entry for students using a new, a new elementary school? Because I want to just make sure that, is it twenty-six that you're targeting or is it twenty-five that you're targeting?
I mean, aggressively, um, we would prefer fall of twenty-five, so the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That, and that's what was communicated in the RFP.
And so, sorry, sorry about that.
We understand that that's very aggressive timeline.
I, I guess that was the point. So if we don't vote and start now, an aggressive timeline becomes kind of an impossible timeline for twenty-five, and we're really taking the vote to whether or not we're going to be ready for twenty-five or we're gonna push back to twenty-six.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is employment of staff. Could someone please read the motion?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is transfer of staff.
I move that the transfer of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
I just want to note that with that particular vote, we, um, approved our new associate principal at Preble High School, who I believe is in the audience, if you wanted to see her. Hi! If you, I mean, I would like to invite you to come up and say hi to whoever you'd like, or, yeah. Hit the button that has a face on it. Yep. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Koo Chang. When I think of the Green Bay School District, I think of family. I've been part of this school district for twenty-one years. Dr. Wilson hired me on uh, and my wife as teachers in the Green Bay School District. I'm pursuing this new role, this new position because I, I've chosen to be part of the Green Bay School District moving forward. And I wanted to appreciate and thank the interview team, both to the, the interview teams that have the confidence, um, to move me forward and recommend me for this AP position. So I look forward to the challenge and I look forward to, uh, the new responsibility and helping move the Green Bay School District into the future so that we are the number one school district in Wisconsin. So thank you for your confidence.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay. Um, next is uh, the final, uh, agenda item for this meeting is resignation of staff. Would someone please recommend, or read the recommended motion?
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's always disappointing to see resignations in November or anytime anyone leaves the district. And Dr. Tiller, I know before you started on here, I made the request to make sure that we're getting some sort of exit interview and we're contacting these people when they leave to figure out why and what we can do to retain our strong employees. I'm hoping that that's happening and look forward to hearing on a macro level, the reports out as to why, um, staff are choosing to leave our district. So just want to bring that up again.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, um, that completes this agenda. Could I, would someone make a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Let the record show, we are adjourned and we're gonna go immediately into, um, our next meeting. Okay, um, I'd like to welcome you all to the, uh, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, work session. Um, before we start that, um, with the agenda, well, let's, let's do the roll call. Go ahead, Kinsey. Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Leighton and Warren?
Here.
Welch? She's excused. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Okay. Six of the seven board members are present. We're going to move on, um, to first, um, I'd, I'd just like to say, um, that it is American Education Week. So happy American Education Week. And I think Dr. Tilly, you had something you wanted to add to that.
Yes, uh, all my, uh, teachers and educators that know me, uh, you know, I produced a video today. Uh, so the video is just when posted, but I want to thank everyone, uh, for November thirteenth through the seventeenth for American Education Week. And on Tuesday, we celebrate, uh, families, which is very important. On Wednesday, we celebrate our, uh, support professionals. On Friday, we celebrate all the substitutes, substitute paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, substitute monitors, substitute custodians, everybody is substitute. We celebrate you. So this is a very exciting week because without you, there is no us. So thank you so much for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Also, it is, I've been, was told just this afternoon, National Trans Week, so I just want to mention that. Also, I want to welcome to the table our ICSC students. Would you guys, guys go ahead and, uh, introduce yourselves?
Hi, I am Merritt Happy. I am a sophomore at Preble High School and I am part of Inner City Student Council.
Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. I'm a senior over at Southwest and I'm the president of Inner City Student Council.
Okay. All right, thank you, um. Next on the agenda is our, uh, open forum. Uh, we've got a number of people who want to speak tonight and I'll call you in the order that we received, um. Please forgive me if I don't get your names right, um, but the first person I have is Tanya. Sione? If you would like to come up to the podium, please, um, state your name for the public to hear and then, um, your address, please, and you have five minutes.
My name is Tanya Sione and my address is twenty-three eighty Ontario Road in Bellevue.
Is your mic on? Yeah, just can you put it up? Just point it up. There we go. That's better.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Tanya Sione and my address.
Is it? Okay, go ahead.
My address is twenty-three eighty Ontario Road in Bellevue. I am the third, fourth, and fifth grade teacher at Catherine Johnson Academy of Rich Virtual Learning. And I'm here to address you tonight regarding the online learning update specifically on what has been listed as the challenges of operating KJ, low enrollment and financial obligations. When KJ Academy opened in twenty twenty-one, the school was flooded with more students than anyone anticipated. Students from around the state enrolled and KJ Academy served a hundred and ninety-nine students in its first year. We fully expected many of those students to return to their home schools and they did. The following year, our staff began to realize what it means to be a specialty school. That's the way we're listed on our school's website. KJ Academy is more than a school. KJ Academy is a district resource that offers a solution to challenges found in Kate, eight classrooms across our district. When the state closed open enrollment to non-charter schools that year, several of our families learned that they would not be able to maintain enrollment at KJ Academy the following year. Not because they didn't want what we had to offer, but because they didn't live in the right place. KJ Academy served one hundred students in its second year. Some families have chosen us to be their homeschool as an alternative to a traditional school. Without KJ Academy, their options are to either homeschool or enroll in another online program. Our enrollment appears low. One day last week, we had forty-seven students enrolled. But we have served sixty-five students so far this year and that number will continue to grow. One thing that makes us a specialty school is that we teach students when traditional in-person teachers cannot. We teach students from their hospital beds. The students of families that need to travel for extended periods of time. We welcome students from any Green Bay area school. We teach them when their in-person teachers are not able to. And when they return to their home schools, we know that we did not miss a beat and that we were there for them when they had a need for us. As of November tenth this year, we have served two hundred and seventy-seven unique students in less than two and a half years. The second challenge that's being listed as a, is the financial obligation. The financial commitment to operate KJ Academy is based on salaries. Closing all or part of KJ Academy will not provide the district the huge financial relief. Our staff will move into other positions within the district and these salaries will still be paid. In addition, some of our families will certainly choose options outside of our district at a cost to the district. We are a vital alternative for students in our district. Students have avoided being placed in more expensive programming while attending KJ Academy. Given the opportunity to continue serving Green Bay students and families, KJ Academy will continue to save money in this way while we help students to grow and learn. Finally, there are pockets within our district that are not aware of Catherine Johnson Academy. They are not aware of our vision that we are transforming education to meet families' unique needs. They are not aware that we are able to help them with their school's challenges. Once we raise awareness, I'm confident that the enrollment should no longer be a challenge. I am confident that when KJ Academy is utilized to a greater extent, the cost of having KJ Academy available to all Green Bay area students and families, should their need arise, will no longer be considered a challenge, but rather an investment in our community. Board members, you were presented with three options. I believe the best option for all Green Bay students is the first option. Please maintain the Catherine Johnson Academy, including the planned expansion to grade eight. As you deliberate these recommendations, I would personally like to invite each of you to observe my class either in person or online to see for yourselves how KJ Academy is meeting the needs of families from across our district. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening.
Thank you. Next is, um, Brianna Anse? Just state your name and address and you have five minutes.
I'm a lot shorter than Tanya. All right. My name is Brianna Anse. I live at two one two seven Swanstone Circle in DePere. So I am the special education teacher at Catherine Johnson Academy. In my three years at KJ Academy, I have taught a total of thirty-one individual students, each one attending KJ for a variety of reasons, from anxiety about school itself, COVID concerns, family travel, high medical needs, bullying, or behavior concerns. KJ serves a very special need in our community. It is so much more than an online school, but a place where students feel accepted and can experience an education that truly meets them where they are at. One of my students attended KJ so that he would be able to travel with his mother. She was a traveling nurse. She worked all over the country and moved every six weeks to a new, a new position. Prior to going to school at KJ, this student would live with his grandmother and not see his mother for months at a time. Instead, he attended online school from places such as New York City, Philadelphia, Atlanta, and Orlando, all while spending quality time with his mother. Unfortunately, last year, his mother had a brain aneurysm and she passed away. Without KJ, that student would not have had the two years he had with his mother. He would not have been with her in Florida when she passed. And all of this happened while he continued to attend online school. He didn't miss a beat. He continued to stay with us through one of the most difficult times in his life. The special education program at KJ Academy is incredibly important and it's very successful for my students. In the comfort of their own home, without the additional stress that in-person school can sometimes add, my students have made incredible progress in their individual goals and their grade level academics. In my three years, I've seen two students be evaluated out of special education. One as recently as this month, who had been in special education for nine years. Previously, this student had such high anxiety about attending school that he would often call home due to migraines and would not attend school altogether. He is now one of our highest achieving students at KJ and even participated in our school naming committee in twenty twenty-two. Some students just do not fit in the box that a brick and mortar school provides. They need comfort, frequent snacks, maybe their pets, parents, some independence. All of this can happen while they're attending school. While attending in-person school, my students were written up for behavior-related incidents an average of six times per year per student. While attending at KJ, they have been written up for a total of zero incidents across all thirty-one students. So while you're considering your options for virtual learning going forward, please think about those students. The ones who don't just quite fit in the in-person classroom. They need you to champion their right to an education that is free, public, least restrictive, and most importantly, the best fit for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is um, James Hazy? State your name again and your address in five minutes.
Yeah, it's James Hayes. Uh, I live in fifteen eighty-two Edison Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Uh, so I came to Catherine Johnson twenty-four hours before school started in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. There were thirty-four fourth grader students, fourth grade students without a teacher. I came to complete my emeritus requirements. I took the position because I saw firsthand how powerful a tool virtual learning could be for certain students during COVID. I quickly saw how Catherine Johnson could change the trajectory of students' lives. I was amazed to learn that, that had school experience of, of many of my, several of my students that were attending brick and mortar schools. They, uh, they were tearing up classrooms, being taken out in handcuffs and bullying other students. These, these were the students who participated the most in virtual learning and when, and asked questions when they were confused. That's when I knew unretirement was in my future. Besides the huge benefit to disruptive students, Catherine Johnson can make a huge difference in attendance issues. I have many examples of students that had various attendance, serious attendance problems before coming to Catherine Johnson and at Catherine Johnson, it changed completely. And as a result, their academics changed completely too. I had students that gained over three years of growth in one year in reading and literacy without any additional intervention services. So when I started teaching fourth grade at Catherine Johnson, my students lived from Nina to Sabiski. Uh, many of them transitioned back into brick and mortar schools for many different reasons. Many by choice, and I know they were well-prepared to succeed. However, some students that were not Green Bay students were not allowed to join us this year. However, some students that were not Green Bay students were not allowed to join us this year. Now, as a middle school teacher, I get to teach the sixth-grade students who call Catherine Johnson Virtual Academy their home since fourth grade. And all of those students that I had as fourth grade that I now have in sixth grade have just made major changes in their life. And it's all the skills that we want every student in Green Bay area public school to possess to become college and career-ready. I believe that Catherine Johnson can and will do this for all of our students. Once last spring, while I was teaching for my wife's hospital room during a break, a nurse who had overheard me teaching asked me if I taught college students. I was confused by her statement and responded, "No, fourth grade." Then she asked me if all my students were gifted and talented. I never had a chance to ask her why she thought that, but I think it had something to do with our students' responsibility level and their self-advocating skills. Besides long-term, besides our long-term students, Catherine Johnson is also extremely effective for students with short-term needs, whether it be students that are physically unable to attend school for health reasons or because they're vacationing out of the country. I've seen how we can help out our district in this way as outlined in our white paper. So when faced with the choice before you, I think the choice is clear. Option one, to keep Catherine Johnson Virtual Academy as a resource, program, and a school for our district. If you'd like to get a firsthand look at Catherine Johnson, you can join my class in person or virtually to learn more about how we're changing students' lives.
Thank you very much. Next is Elizabeth Steffel. If anybody else out there is thinking about speaking, now would be a good time to fill out forms. They're in the hallway. Just get them to Kinsey. Please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Awin Steffel. I go by Awin. I live at ten-thirty-four Wilson Avenue here in Green Bay. Was that it? Cool. So today was interesting. When deciding to speak today, I had to decide if I wanted to come here as a mother who has a daughter who attends KJ Academy or as a professional. My background, I got my bachelor's in psychology and human development at the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay, and I have a master's in social work, specifically working with mental health disorders from the University of Southern California. My background is working with people with severe mental health issues, as well as autism, ADHD, and such. When in school, I learned that most of the struggles that people who are not what we call neurotypical go-through come with the way that we as our society have structured ourselves to expect things from children. For example, how many of you have said or heard, "Well, you know, bullying teaches those kids what they need to do to be better. Bullying teaches them how to fit in." I've said those things in my life when I was younger, before I understood, and I have heard those things said by many adults throughout my life. Bullying, psychology has proven, does not help the non-neurotypical learn how to survive in a school system. When your brain works differently than that of a normal person, the stress of being bullied shuts down your frontal lobes. You don't understand why you're being teased. You literally can't understand why they're making fun of you. As a, I'm an eccentric. I've been an eccentric my whole life, but I am neurotypical. I learned young that I just needed to mask it. I remember in fifth grade, on the teeter totter, my friend Ellie Moan saying to me, a lover of Shakespeare, "Hey, you know, the kids would like you if you stopped being so smart all the time." So I learned to mask, and I learned to hide, and I got an education, and I hid my nerd well. And then I had a daughter with autism, who has the same nerdiness that I do. She's been obsessed with studying religion and history and biology since she was five. Five years old, I would bring her to my college classes, and she'd be debating with my ethics students. I teach at NWTC, by the way. She thrives in the college environment. But the first phone calls that I got from school for behavior issues were in four K, she started hiding in her locker because the bad men were coming. Because while the kids were learning about school shootings and how to be safe, her brain couldn't wrap herself around the idea that this is pretend. It's not real. So she started hiding in lockers. And then in kindergarten, I got the phone call, she was in trouble because she decided to write with permanent marker on the permanent little backpacks in the back of her chairs. And I took her home, and like any mom, "Why would you do that?" "Because I was making the teacher happy." It didn't make her happy. But it's pretty. She likes pretty things. And no matter how I explained again and again, she just didn't get it. By the end of kindergarten, she was being bullied so bad, I pulled her, and I put her in private school, thinking, "Private school, all the parents are talking about, oh, private school's amazing, and they'll cater better." It didn't. Her love of anime and Pokemon, biology and evolution, and different gods and Thor did not fit in with the five other girls in her private school class. So then I switched her to Elmore Elementary because I was running out of ideas, and Elmore was amazing. I love that school to death. Principal there is amazing. Ha, it was a blessing of a school. But she still struggled. They had so much help for her, so many resources, but they couldn't stop or prevent what her biggest struggle was. She just doesn't get it. No matter how many times you explain things, she just misses key social skills that we all take for granted. Got to the point where she was suicidal, and let me tell you as a mom, having a suicidal fifth grader. I'm a big proponent of public schooling, and I chose to homeschool because I didn't know what else to do. All of the, you guys are amazing. Elmore was amazing. You had everything, and it wasn't enough for her. I homeschooled her for a year, and she did great. She started studying my college textbooks. The girl is academically amazing. Then, some personal stuff, I can't homeschool all the time. I gotta work. I got bills to pay. KJ Academy was there, and I put her in there. And where in public school, she was making eh grades, same in private because she was so stressed by the learning environment. She's getting As and Bs. Not a problem. She's excelling academically because those social skills that she's always struggled with, that she just doesn't get, they're provided at that school. When she starts doing things that are a little weird, I'll hear her teacher mute her and be like, "Hey, let's go talk." And they'll explain to her what she's doing that's wrong. And then because it's not me, because if you have kids, you know, they reach a certain age, and mom doesn't really know, but the teachers know. So things that I've said a million times that she just didn't get, they're getting from them. And I've watched her learn not to sing at people, but talk to people, and how to hold herself still in a place where she has to be appropriate. She's learning all of those skills, and she's learning the why. If she had stayed in public school, she would probably be dead. And that's the struggle that I deal with every day. And we finally found this school, and we've been here for three months, and you might close it. I heard you talking about money, and I get it. I do. Working in academics, I get it. But how much money is a kid's life worth? I don't want to homeschool her again. Homeschooling, she's not going to make friends. She's making friends at KJ. She got invited to sleepovers. She's hosted a sleepover. Never happened before because she's meeting other kids like her. I don't want to homeschool her, but if I put her back in normal school, I probably won't have a daughter. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you for your time, and I hope you guys make the right choice.
Thank you. Next is Arabella Steffel.
Hi.
I'm assuming you live at the same address.
Ask my mom. Yes, correct.
You have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, I am Arabella Steffel. I am a student at KJ Academy. I have high-functioning autism. I joined at the beginning of this year. And let's say I just have a hard time in regular school. That makes me kind of suicidal. Bullying, that gets a lot of stress. My parents are getting a divorce right now, which is not helping either. I also have terrible trust issues with multiple people and with basically everyone. I could only trust a handful of people, which would shrink and expand over a week. When I joined KJ, I expected at first that the teachers did not care as much as teachers who teach kids who learn differently than others. For example, when I was younger and I was at several different schools, I was basically constantly shut down. One time, when I was leaving the private school my mother talked about, my principal asked me, "Why are you leaving?" I'm like, "The bullying was way too much." And she's like, "Well, why don't you be like the other kids?" I can't. I'm physically unable to. So that's what I expected from the KJ teachers at first. I had my guards up. I was afraid of anything to come at me. And every time I asked for help, even the tiniest thing, which I have troubles with, it was a test for me and for them. Then, over the past few months, it started getting difficult. I started having some emotional problems with my father, and a bunch of stuff has just been happening, and it's been getting really hard. I started getting emotionally unstable again. And then one of the days, my mom was at work, and I was having an emotional breakdown. So I decided to finally talk to one of my teachers. And I was not expecting what came. They were actually there. They cared. They helped. The first thing Mrs. Anse did for me was help me calm down. She talked to me. She had me take a few deep breaths, which are things normally teachers I know don't do. They just start questioning what's wrong. But she actually took an idea of where my mental health was at, at that point. And that was the first thing what started getting me to trust my teachers at KJ more. I started asking for help more and being able to trust my teachers more and more, which then I have had horrible times with math over the past several years. And it has gotten to the point where I can ask for help with my math when I have a struggle. I'm actually able to, I usually end up just turning off. My brain just turns off whenever I have math usually. I'm now able to actually listen, focus, understand. And a part of it is, I'm not afraid of what my teachers are going to be like. I'm not afraid of what the other kids are going to do because I feel safe in the environment I am at. I can talk to my teachers if I need to. They are there. I have very few places of where I can feel safe at. And it's a bit scary. But I know no matter what, KJ is one of those places for me. I know no matter what, if it's night, and even if I'm having a hard time, if my teachers are there, they will answer. No matter how long it takes, I can count on them to be able to take me aside and ask me what's going on, and they will help me understand what I need help learning. Some things my head just can't wrap around. I am finally understanding those things. For like some reading and writing, I've had some struggles with those, with like the ways to sentence my writing. And then I have been able to take that and bring it into my own writing. I write a lot of fanfiction. I am addicted to anime. So I take that, and I'm able to add it into my writing, which then... Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one more. Again, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, that would not be the time to... Looks like we have another person. Next is Denise Gummer Hutchinson. She state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Denise Gummer Hutchinson, thirty-one-eighty-four Herman's Road in Franklin, Wisconsin. It is my understanding that the board is considering a resolution to the city of Green Bay and surrounding communities to have more transparency on the tax bill. I'm here tonight to speak in support of that resolution. The present tax bill is unfair to taxpayers, the school district, and the children served in this district. Not only that, but it is confusing to taxpayers to think that they are providing significant funds to the public schools when they are not. The Wisconsin State Legislature has mandated that the funding to private school vouchers, without any transparency to the public, be in our tax bill, and it is unfair. But you, the school board, have been mandated to manage financially figures, but how to, not only that, but to figure out how to support this district. Again, you're put in an unfair situation. The children that we are serving in this district are being put in an unfair situation because the funding is less than it should be to children in public schools. The state constitution of Wisconsin requires that our school districts be created and serve all children in the state of Wisconsin, and right now, that is not happening with a fair and equitable education and the correct funding. You all take your responsibility to this district, children, and the community seriously. Without transparency, community members have no understanding of where their money is going. There is nothing wrong with providing more knowledge about how their dollars are being spent. So right now, that taxpayers understand they are paying for private schools, which they do not understand at this point. And those school districts aren't accountable to the children, the community, or to the taxpayers. So thank you for creating this resolution. Please work to help the city council and the county boards in the greater Green Bay area understand the importance of transparency on our tax bill. It is critical. It is urgent. It is timely. Right now, funds are being spent and funneled through the Green Bay public schools and sent to private schools without any accountability, and it is unfair to the students, the community, and the taxpayers. Thank you for all of your hard work and your time, and we will do what we can as community members to help move this resolution forward. Thank you.
This will be the final person. Sarah Erdman Savage. If you would, again, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Okay, this is on?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm Sarah Erdman Savage. My address is fourteen-eighty-nine Cedar Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five-four-three-zero-two. I am a parent of a student, Dorothy Savage, at Catherine Johnson Academy. She transferred from Ann Sullivan Elementary when it was no longer an option there to be online. She's been at Catherine Johnson Academy since. When she was at Sullivan, she was regularly bullied. She was kicked. She was hit. She was spit at. Since she has moved to Catherine Johnson Academy, she has thrived. Her grades have gotten better. She's not bullied. She's not pushed around. She's accepted for who she is, and she is thriving where she is. I am pleased asking you, as a parent, that you keep this school open. These kids are doing great. The teachers are great. It is a wonderful place for out-of-the-box thinkers. As you all know, as educators and parents, kids do not all think the same. They don't all process the world the same, and they all learn differently. This is a place where kids are free to do that. Please keep them open. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just wait. If you want to come up and speak right now, and you can fill it out later and make sure Kinsey gets it. Okay? Just come on up and state your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
Uh, I'm Genevieve, and I live with my sister, my mom. So my sister, when, like a few years ago, when she was just in elementary school, she would just be like super depressed every time she came home. And when we were younger, like when I was in school and she was in school, she was like really excited, always excited. But then when she went into public school, because of like the age that you go into school, then she just got really depressed, and she never really hung out with me really more. She would ignore me. She would ignore me. And she didn't even care if she would like do nothing or be bored. And she would just sit on the couch and stare at the ceiling. And I was like, that's hurting her, it's not just hurting me. And then when she went into KJ, she was just all excited and she wasn't sad anymore. And she would jump around and she would talk more. Cause my sister is a very talkative person. But when she went into school, she wasn't. And then when she went into KJ, she was just talkative and she had more friends and it was just awesome. Cause I love when my sisters happy and when she was in like public school, she wasn't happy. But when she went into KJ, she was like super excited and like everything was just better.
Thank you. Just, just fill out the form and make sure Kenzie gets it. Alright. Um, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on in our agenda. Next is online education update. That's going to be Vicki. And Jess.
Alright. Good evening.
Good evening.
I had originally asked Jessica Malcor to join me at the table. She's the Director of School Leadership to highlight what's going on at KJ Academy for the Board of Education. I'm not sure that's needed any longer. Our speakers did a wonderful job of that, but Jess, I, I will ask you to in a little bit, okay? The purpose of this portion of the meeting is to provide the Board of Education with an update on online learning and provide discussion, opportunity for discussion about KJ Academy. We grouped this into three different categories, high school, John Dewey Academy of Learning, and the Catherine Johnson Academy of Enriched Virtual Learning. First, a little background on each and current state. Four high schools. In twenty twenty-three this year, the Board of Education approved the purchase of Canvas and also set an expectation for us to transition our core courses into Canvas online platform for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. We have successfully done that, I'm pleased to report. And special thanks to our high school teachers and to the Teaching and Learning Department for making that happen. What does this mean? It means that all of our high school students, beginning next fall, sorry Viva, beginning next fall, will be able to take their core, core, core courses online if they so choose. In addition, we will continue to add courses to make those available in the future, and that's going to be based upon student desire, what, what they would like to take. Typically in courses, if there are few students that sign up for them, say I'm a Preble student and I, I signed up for a class and only nine other Preble students sign up, we wouldn't run that course. But moving forward, we will look district wide, nine students at Preble, maybe ten at Southwest, et cetera, and we'll be able to run that course with our own teachers. That's the caveat. John Dewey Academy of Learning, they have provided online instruction for our students for many years now. K through, I'm sorry, eight through twelve. And we've been using the Wisconsin eSchool network for that. That is not our teachers and it's not our course. It's, it's predetermined. And we haven't been finding great success with that program. We have about eighteen students enrolled in that, in that school in John Dewey right now for online. And the district pays about fifty-two thousand dollars a year to the Wisconsin eSchool network to provide those courses. Data has shown that our students aren't finding great success that route. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that it isn't our teachers. And it's part of the reason why Catherine Johnson Academy is so successful. Catherine Johnson currently offers online services for K through seventh grade. Enrollment, as you heard during public forum, is forty-seven students currently, but it does fluctuate throughout the year. The current financial commitment for KJ Academy is nine hundred and fifty-two thousand per year. And the school is set to expand to grade eight. I do want to correct something that we heard through a public forum. KG, KJ Academy, Catherine Johnson Academy is a public school. It is a public school and we're, we're darn proud of it. I, I want to make sure that's really clear. It's not a charter, it's not a private school. It is a part of the Green Bay Area Public School District. Moving forward, as I mentioned, the high school, we will continue to expand the course offerings for John Dewey. Beginning with the twenty-four twenty-five school year, we will discontinue offering the online option. Jen Agamite, the principal of John Dewey, she and her staff will be working with their students that are currently on, on the online program and work with the homeschool to ensure that those students can continue, but actually be at their homeschool or designated with their homeschool to take the online courses as well as post-secondary credit-bearing online courses. For Catherine Johnson, the number of students enrolling in the elementary online is continuing to be fluid, but it has declined since COVID. I think it's a darn shame that the state legislature didn't expand the offer because if you take a look at what is going on at Catherine Johnson's school, it's outstanding. I, I believe personally, it is a model for online education. And I believe that if other districts were allowed to enroll, that we would continue to raise our enrollment at that school. Jess, I'm hoping at this point you could talk a little bit about your experience there and what you've learned about KJ Academy. I, I do want to mention real quick though, before you do that, we talked about reducing FTE as a way to address the fiscal part. So declining enrollment, but high cost. And I'm hoping you can talk a little bit about that. What would happen to the programming if we did reduce FTE?
Alright, good evening, everyone. So the biggest, the biggest thing to understand about KJ is, is how it's changed over, over time. So in, in spring of twenty twenty, we know that our schools all went virtual. And in a, in a quick way to make that happen, instruction universally happened synchronously in person around the universal instruction. So the kids would all get on, you'd have your twenty-some plus kids and you'd do the universal lesson. Over the last two years, that has changed drastically at KJ because of, of the, the framework that they're, they're using. And that looks like a good portion of the day is a flipped opportunity where the kids are doing asynchronous activities for the universal instruction. So they may watch a video. All of the content is created by the classroom teachers. All the resources they use are the district's curricular resources. They do follow all of the same assessments that we use in the rest of the district. And so having Green Bay Area Public School teachers teach the content is, is what makes it so unique, is what Vicki was saying. So then when the teachers bring the kids in, in online for synchronous learning, that is the small group instruction that is occurring. That's where the common groups of two, three, four, dependent on their needs, their strategies that they may be strategy group based on whatever it, it is to be responsive and differentiate. But they, so the kid's days looks very much like asynchronously completing tasks, watching videos, getting prepared to come for the, for the synchronous learning and small group instruction. So the kids experience between three, four, five, sometimes small group instructions a day. Small group instruction a day. They've got their daily mission. So they get a, a doc that has every day tailored, a brand new tasks for the day. They're getting feedback by our, our teachers on all of their assignments in either Google Classroom or in Seesaw. And that feedback helps them move to the next level of, of wherever they're headed. And it's just a really awesome experience. On Lynn, we had the privilege of spending some time together. There today, we saw everything from small group occurring. We saw, as, as was mentioned earlier, meeting students' needs if they're going through treatments of sorts. I mean, we, they are servicing all sorts of students and it's just a really awesome thing to see. So in terms of the integrity of the program, we've, we've got a teacher teaching K one, one teaching grade two, another teaching three, five, and then two teachers splitting six, seven. And all of that content creation, if we start whittling down the staffing at this point, we're going to lose the integrity of the, of the program and the way it stands as now. So maintaining that, that core group of at least five, I think, is a really important piece of maintaining the integrity of the program.
Thank you. How would you do? Yeah. Uh, so we present the board with three options for discussion moving forward for KJ Academy. One is to maintain the KJ Academy, including the planned expansion to grade eight. Option two, discontinue grades K through five at KJ Academy and relocate the middle school portion to a middle school. And option three, close KJ Academy and discontinue offering an option for online education to students in K through eight.
Alright, is there any questions? Brian and James.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I had the opportunity to tour KJ Academy. There weren't, weren't students in, taking place then, but to see the setup of it. And when I was, I'm glad to have it as one of my buildings this year. When we were going through that, is my understanding that there is kind of pockets of schools in the district that I don't want to say get it, but are very proactive with KJ. Is that what you're seeing as well? Are we seeing success from certain schools, kind of understanding the program that's offered? And the ability to utilize that for students that that's going to be a good fit? And if it is, is there a way that we can expand that to other schools so they see that to expand the numbers?
I think there are some schools that are more familiar with KJ and what they have to offer. And when they are familiar, they see how that can become an option for some of their students. So as part of their multi-level systems of support, when they're supporting families and children and, and personalized pathways, I think some utilize it and tap into KJ more than others. And I definitely think that's something we can do to educate all, so they can see where that could be a potential for students.
And I think the best way to have that happen is obviously principal to principal talking with it. I mean, the, the district can send out emails and, and have that contact. But if principals are seeing that's successful for them just to reach out to other principals and say, hey, this, this is working really well with some of our students. I think it's definitely something that should take place, so.
Yeah, I, I second, thank you for coming up. I was able to tour KJ right when I became a board member, so a year and a half ago. At that time, I think the flip hadn't happened, right? I think there was a lot of synchronous teaching. And when I was talking to the principal, the constraint on growing the classroom was based on trying to schedule the one-on-ones that also had to go with the synchronous. So if enrollments were to improve, however that happens, what's the constraint around classroom size that you're dealing with in this, in this system? At that time, it was lower than I expected it to be. And I wonder if the flip and concentrating on asynchronous into small group versus one-on-one kind of context increases the, the size of classroom that a teacher can, can manage?
I think Adam is in the Zoom meeting with us. Adam is the principal of KJ Academy. Are you there, Adam?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you hear the question from James?
What does the flip classroom do in regards to enrollment? And the ability to serve more students, is that correct?
Per teacher, right? We, we just discussed how many FTE are we, we're talking about. And I think when we first, I first met you and we toured the school, there was a pretty small classroom constraint. And it was around, you know, kind of at that time, just the number of one-on-one time slots a teacher could, could schedule, right? It was a scheduling constraint. And what I heard tonight, it seems like, you know, the models kind of flipped where the concentration of asynchronous content delivery and then small group instruction. And I wonder what that does to classroom size capabilities there?
Yeah, so I definitely think it gives us more flexibility in regards to students that we were able to serve. I'm right, because it opens up time within, within any given day. Part of our process has been through, you know, these last three years or two and a half years. It's kind of been a test and continuously modifying and changing based on what students needs and what, what's being successful. And I think over the last, you know, half a year, year, and we really talked about sustainability and how we can continue to make this program be successful. And that's where that flip model came in, where we are able to serve more students at different grade levels with the given staff that we have.
As mentioned that if you speak more of the JDL students, online options and how that would play out, is it possible that what I'm looking at is students that are attending Dewey and taking online courses, if they were to transfer to KJ to receive the online parts, is there a way that they'd still be able to attend at Dewey as well? Is there any programming where students are taking the online courses at Dewey? They're still having that experience, working with students and, you know, the social aspects and the, the great programming that we offer at Dewey that they would be able to do both? Am I kind of clear on what I'm looking for on that?
You are, and I will seek an answer from the John Dewey principal. Anybody else?
I, I think it's, I, I think it's important that you know, I think whatever, whatever wasn't working for the online Dewey students, I think that hits the nail on the head that it's not with our own, our own teachers. Alright, so whenever we just, we just do better when we have our, our own, there's, and so I'd like to see there be, you know, some, some kind of a connection there. And we, we have had, you know, there were and have been Dewey students who you know, came a couple of times and never again. But there are also a couple that came a couple of times and liked it and kept going and ended up being fully in person or were online the entire time, but did some special activities like the, the Trees for Tomorrow trips. So, and what the benefit of that was, wasn't that they were getting the you know, they were getting the great experiences like the, the class, the class trip and the, the time together and the community circle in the morning when they, on the days that they did go. This way, they would also be getting a good quality online education with, with KJ instead of with you know, and I'm sure it's, you know, I'm, I'm sure whatever we're purchasing is okay. But we, we need to do better than, than okay. So hopefully that linkage, regardless of what the title is on the report card, I think we need to have that linkage, cause certainly I think there could be a from, from what I've, from what I've seen, and I've not, I've not toured KJ yet, although I've been a very outspoken advocate for online before even COVID. So I already, I already knew about it and I just hope we keep that, you know, that partnership there. And I'm, I certainly would be a, a strong, a strong supporter of, of keeping this. Keeping this as it is, and certainly if there's, if you look at everything that, everything KJ can do, help students who might have to, might have to travel, you know, unexpectedly. Help families where you could have some kind of emergency situation. They might not be in Green Bay for, for months. You know, do you, where, how, where are you going to be? What's your better option? If you can stay here or what? You try to find, try to find a place in a school district for two months and, and come back? And we have, we have that here. And we had, we had that by kind of, kind of by accident. Some families were greatly helped by that during COVID. And now we can keep offering it. So it, it might have been forty-seven on, you know, on one particular day next week. But with the number of kids we have here, you can't tell me that there aren't. As word gets out, there wouldn't be at least, you know, a couple, I think that two hundred number, we could probably get close to that just with our own kids. Not, not that they've been in all year, but there are reasons to, to do it for part of a year or to do part of your classes there. So I really appreciate the, you know, the, the update here. and the very good overview from our, from our speakers before. And I certainly am a strong supporter of KJ.
Go ahead, James, and then, and then Laura. Okay. Go ahead, Laura. You go first.
Just a quick comment for our thousands of viewers out there. I don't think asynchronous and synchronous are really common language outside of education and training. And so I just wanted to kind of share that synchronous is real time. You're interacting with the teacher right there and in the classroom. And asynchronous is something that you can kind of do on your own time and log in. Just you and the, whatever the video or whatever it may be. So that's all. Thank you.
Follow up on that directly related. So also I, I just want to make sure people don't get the idea after hearing that correct information that oh, so it's just, you know, oh, they're just with the teacher a little bit and they're just watching videos. It's not, it's not like that either. It's just there's, we've had, we've had asynchronous instruction for, for 200 years. It was homework and it still is homework, right? That's asynchronous. So this is perhaps flipping, flipping things around. So you do like it's flip the classes, uh, practice in math sometimes. Your better, your teacher, your teacher interactive time may be better spent, you know, working through problems live after you might've watched a lecture. So it's not like we're throwing in this new, oh yeah, you gotta school, but half of it, so much of this is asynchronous. We, it's just flipping the order or something.
Go ahead, James and then Brian.
In the proposal, you indicate that there is an opportunity to transition KJ to campus. Is there an expense or some, is some technicalities that would be interesting to the board if that were a decision that we took?
Wait, wait till you get up here. Yeah. Yeah. For like, for like, like Laura said, we have thousands of people watching. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Speak into the microphone.
Thank you for asking that question. Absolutely no cost to the district. Right now, we, I always lean on my technology, folks. The technology is already operational at KJ. We are using it for our middle school students there. We actually took our interim assessments of Mastery Connect. So the, the structure is already in place. We have plenty of seats to absorb KJ. What our aspiration would be is to have the KJ Academy go all to instructure. And many, many, many districts across the United States use Canvas for elementary. And that way it gives a platform where it's, it's one platform that they can run their whole school on. So there would be no cost for, we, we're locked in for six years. So we're good to go in that.
Okay. Who's next? Lynn. Go ahead, Lynn.
So are we, do I understand that two weeks from now, we're going to vote on these three, these three options? Okay. So I wonder how many board members have visited KJ Academy and visited classes in session? Because I spent two hours there this morning and I visited with, I met the entire faculty as a whole group. And I've visited every class but one in session. And I wondered, does anybody want to, does anybody need, need to know what I saw and what my observations were or no? No? No?
I'd like to hear just a couple of highlights that were stuck out to you the most.
Yes, please.
So I had no idea what to expect as usual. And I expected, I didn't know if it was going to be like what I saw my grandchildren doing during COVID. They don't, they're not in Wisconsin, but they were with me and going to school in their beds and all these black boxes on the screen with names, but nobody tuned in and hearing snoring in the background, et cetera. That was one option. The other thing I, I thought maybe I was going to see kids watching videos and then filling out, you know, did the dog bark? Yes or no? And that sort of thing. And so I saw actual, I mean, I, I thought, how can this be? It sounds like it's going to be classrooms and it really is classrooms. And I saw very happy, very happy children for the most part. I got to watch second, two second graders individually, each one, read a book that they had never read before. And I heard them use their logic at the end to have a little conversation with the teacher. It was just amazing. I, I saw the, the difference between synchronous and asynchronous in that you know, like one teacher was talking to two, two students on her screen. But I knew there were other kids in the class. I said, how do you know what they're doing? How do you know they're not just out, you know, having a snack or playing outside? And she showed me her screen and she said, I can see what's on every one of their screens. Another thing I thought was really impressive was that the second graders were manipulating their own screens. So as they were reading the book, this, this one little girl very, very astutely moved it from left to right. And you could see the left column and the right column. And, you know, her compatriot moved it around a little bit differently, but it suited his purposes. And I was, I was amazed at the, yeah, there is a, some kind of feedback going on. Is that problem, I think, Laura, for the feedback? Yeah. Maybe I'm the only one having feedback. Maybe I should back away a little bit. Oh, anyway, that takes care of it, Laura. So this is what I'd like to say about these three options. I don't think any of these three options is the right option. I think there's a fourth option. I don't believe, yes, I'd go for number one. Absolutely. If I had to choose, but I don't think maintain is the answer. I think to me, this is just like, of course, I'm, you know, I'm new, I'm a newbie and it's all new to me. So I go to learn about the IB program. And it's like, I mean, I was ready to say shut the darn thing down. It costs so much money. Then I learn about it and it's like, oh my God, let's make this grow. This is fantastic. That's the same way I felt about this school. No, we don't want to maintain it and just see if it can sink or swim. We want to make this bigger and better. It's the potential I saw there and I, I felt like a classroom teacher. I have been a classroom teacher for many years and I felt like this is real education going on. You know, there were videos that these students were watching that the teacher herself had created. And I think it, we are the only district in Wisconsin, if I understand correctly, that has a virtual learning program that is actually the same curriculum all of our other children take. And these teachers and these students have to meet the same state standards and do the same testing. Nobody's skating by and I'm, I'm very upset that the funding was taken away for people to choice in. If I would have been here, I wouldn't have taken that sitting down. I think somebody ought to do something about that. That's absolutely ridiculous. But I walked away from there thinking, there's so much potential. I'm telling you, I saw, I watched, I talked to a little girl in her hospital bed at St. Vincent Hospital who's being treated for cancer and who was in school because of this program. And I did, one teacher asked the kids to take, each take a turn and tell me why they liked the school. And they did talk about bullying. I just, I think that option number four, support this, make it as good as you can possibly make it. There's so much potential here.
Good, Brian.
I have a couple of, the first statement is obviously there's ways that people all over can stand up and do something about it. And it's nice that we got our blue books today because then you can contact your state legislators and ask them to change that. So we can have open enrollment and we can have the plans that go through. And we can provide the great education that we do in Green Bay to students throughout the state if they want that as an option. And I, if you want my blue book to find out who to contact, I'm more than happy to give it to you. The second question I have, and Dr. Schart here and Adam, I think you're both going to have, hopefully the information on this. Looking at as a district, we have, I would say about 3% of the students in our buildings that just, it's not the right fit. And it's demonstrated through either behavior in the hallways. It's demonstrated through behavior in the classroom. It's demonstrated in many different ways. And I'm not saying that our, our schools are failing. I'm not saying anything. I'm saying it's just students aren't necessarily fitting in the best setup. This is a great option and I'm not saying that as a punishment. I'm not saying we're going to put you in this class. We're going to forget about you for the next three years. You're just, you're out of our, our concerns here. And I'd like to know, it, it was spoken about before that there's a fair number of students that are receiving services for IEPs. How their behavior has changed, how we implement that IEP to help them be successful. And if there's the communication with the homeschool on that. And following that, it kind of ties up with transition plans. So when we have students that are coming into KJ for medical needs, or we had talked about migrant services, these, these different plans. Is there a plan set up for if the student does choose to return? And when, and more importantly, when we're welcoming them into this new learning environment, the communication that takes place. So kind of jam two or three in at once.
Adam, are you available? There we are.
Yeah. So a couple of different questions. You talked about students that may struggle with some behaviors in classrooms and, and IEPs and all of that stuff. Is that correct? And how we're meeting those needs?
Yeah, kind of jammed three questions in at once there. So, yeah.
Yeah. So we've, that's actually one of the areas we've had some of our most success. And one of the things that I think we've learned through this process is just walking through a school building or sometimes being in a classroom setting can be a factor that impacts behaviors. So what we're able to do is we're able to provide students that instruction in an environment that they have control over. And most of the time they're only in instruction or have to be on for, you know, 15 to 20 minutes at a time. Then they're able to go and come back. So just the structure in itself has, has helped students with the behavior. And then we also have a phenomenal, you know, team and of teachers that are able to work with students and they have the time to work with students on different behaviors. As you've heard in the open forum and with, through Miss Anse and Special Education Teacher. So they are able to get their minutes, they're able to get their services. But we're able to structure what that environment looks like. Probably much more than in a regular education classroom. Second question was about the transition plans, correct? So just, so one of the things that we did our first year and we went back to this year is every single student or family that transitions into KJ has to have an orientation meeting with me. That's where we're able to sit down, learn a little bit more about the family and then also talk a little bit more about our programs. Really truly understand what they're committing to. And then, you know, hopefully students stay with us, but we also do understand that sometimes we are a temporary solution. What we do is we work with that returning school to determine where they're at. What is the best time for transition and really look, meet with the family to figure out what is the need? And then try to set that student up for success moving forward.
I just have to share with you one more thing because my two big concerns when I read this, this proposal and, and the three options were cost and lack of socialization. That's what really worried me about kids not being with other kids in the classroom. Even though I know for some, it's very, very difficult. And I just wanted to tell you that this morning I was in a kindergarten class. And at one point, the teacher told me, I can't remember the term she used, but she said that she was, had given them, it was like a five-minute break. And there were only two little girls on the screen at that time. The other kids were doing their asynchronous thing. And I watched these two little girls, the teacher turned off her, her camera and her microphone. She could see them and hear them and they knew that she could, but they couldn't see and hear us. And they talked to each other as if they were in the same room. These are kindergartners. They were showing each other their phones. They were reading to each other things on their phone screens. And in that five minutes, they figured out a way to share passwords so that in the future they can play a game together on their phones. I was so impressed.
Anybody else? Andrew.
So I do, I do IT for a living. So don't, don't share passwords. It's, it's, don't, don't share passwords. Perhaps the, perhaps a password shared between two kindergartners for a phone game that's not used for anything else might be the least bad password to share, but still don't share passwords. Second thing is I just kind of piggybacking off that, I think that, that, that is a good point. I'm, I'm part of a, I'm part of a company that the vast majority of our the evil, we don't have a Green Bay physical office, so I will always be at home. But even in our cities where we have offices, people are, you know, people are largely remote. And yeah, was I skeptical like everyone else before COVID? You know, well, is this really, is this really going to have the same team spirit? And what, what I've found is in interaction, I said, to the, to a large extent, yes. I mean, there are times getting together face to faces is nice. And I'm sure there are opportunities can be provided for those who wish to do that. But yeah, there is. The technology makes it a lot easier, I think, to have a meaningful social interaction online with individuals in small groups in 2023 than it, you know, than it did in 2003, right? You just, then it would be just probably mostly just text and so forth. So, no, I, I I really like hearing that. I think these, it's these, these stories and anecdotes really put some, put the show how the human touch is still there. And it's not, and it's a very, it's a very carefully crafted thing for those. And it, and now that it's, doesn't have to be for everybody because of COVID. It can be fine tuned for those who wish, wished to do this. So, yes, thank you.
James and then Brian.
Question, and excuse my ignorance if this is obvious. Is online within our school districts designated a pathway? It's a
I'm sorry. Yeah. It is not a pathway, but it's a methodology of teaching. It certainly is college career and community ready. College courses you take online, but it is not a unique pathway. Going to the technology pieces, of course, there are definitely courses that would lead toward a degree in technology, but not align as more of a methodology.
Okay. Just a follow-up quick because I, I know that it was the board that delivered the message to the district to have everything on the table as we look at cost reduction, right? And it's painful. And I'm sure that there are those that are viewing that would draw comparisons between this conversation and other conversations that we've had to have over the last couple of months. But I, I do want to just mention that we've gone outside of our way, right? To make sure that we don't disrupt those, the flexibility with which we really catch all students and make sure that we give those, everyone an opportunity. And so in, in this moment where we're talking across the table and about facility plans and there are comparisons that may be drawn, I see this extraordinarily different, right? I see this as an equitable approach to delivering core curriculum. And even in those conversations that we've previously had, wherever possible, we've tried to maintain the content and the, 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 the education that the building provided. And this is obviously
Brian.
So I have a couple of questions that kind of feed off each other. When I ran, I ran on the goal of having community schools and making sure that we are able to educate the whole child through tying in community services that were possible. And Green Bay does a good job with providing the services, but looking at that in a community school model, which is a very specific thing, and I'm happy to share information on it with anyone that wants it. Through Catherine, through Kate, through Catherine Johnson, do we have students that have housing insecurity? And if we did, we'd still be able to provide and make, make that work, I'm assuming. I'm hoping all the answers are yes. Do I'm, okay.
Yes, yes.
We're able to provide community services and I'm sure outreach on some of those is something that we could expand. Whether it's having speech pathology services through their, through their IEP. having speech pathology services through their, through their I P, I'm sure is being provided, but also partnering with others entities to work on social skills and mental health needs being met would be able to be done there, just as we do telehealth and other options at some point. If a student moves, they're still able to attend Catherine Johnson. If they're anywhere within the geographic footprints of the district. So where we have, while we can have students enroll in just about any of our buildings, that doesn't interfere with their learning at that point, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Could, could you build on the migrant services part that was just mentioned briefly in the, in the paper on this?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. It is not uncommon at some of our bilingual schools for some of our students to during the winter months, leave Green Bay and go to Mexico or another country. During that time, many times those students will unenroll and then re-enroll with us. We are able to provide those students with, for them to continue their education and continue working with Catherine Johnson Academy. So that when they do transition back, they're able to resume their education as normal without that gap of instruction time.
Just real quick, did you, did I understand that you're saying that when they go to Mexico, they stay in school with you?
That is correct. Yes. So they stay with us.
One other question, please. Who is or was Catherine Johnson?
Are you asking me that?
Well, there's a famous movie. She worked for NASA and was part of the team that calculated the re-entry math by hand in order to make sure that the astronaut landed in the ocean where we wanted them to land in the ocean. And so she's a mathematician that is a very decorated NASA employee.
Okay, go ahead.
It's also important to note she was a black woman. And I have the Barbie.
Yes. Okay.
Well, actually, since I have it on. I know this is for a vote in two weeks, but I'm, I just wonder if there's, it just seems from the discussion, there's not really a lot of support or any support for the recommendations. Does this still need to move forward on the agenda? Or I mean, should we discuss? Well, I guess we have to vote. Never mind. Answer my question.
Yes and no, I guess you don't, you act, you don't have to vote if you're not changing anything. So is, I mean, is there any reauthorization or any, you know, we don't, you know, we don't generally vote to keep X, Y, or Z program open if the, if it's the default is that it's open. So so, I mean, sometimes we decide at these meetings to not have something go forward. Well, we, we did when we had committees, when we have work session leads, which still haven't been established yet, but.
I guess my preference would be to leave it on the agenda, address it in two weeks. It gives people more opportunity also to give us feedback. I expect to hear from more, more people. And, and, and we'll take it up again in two weeks. That would be, that would be my preference, but I, that's just mine. Go ahead, Brian.
Lynn had mentioned option four, which I think meets with option one with more enthusiasm on there. I think that we do need to authorize expanding to eighth grade on it. So I think there is an action item that we would need to take. We already did that. Okay. So I say leave it on there and the discussion of where we actually stand and moves forward with it. So.
All right. I just have one more question. So like so many things around public education, the state legislature seems to be determined to make it harder to deliver quality education. Why did they change their stance on open enrollment, which is, is so vital to this particular school, but when I think about the, all the good this could do for students literally anywhere. I don't remember when that happened. Like, what was the rationale?
They actually have it on the books that students couldn't enroll in our district if they were out of district, but they reversed that during, or paused it during Covid. Because not every district had an online option.
So people can open enroll into other districts in a brick and mortar school, right? What am I, what am I misunderstanding here?
So it's, you can, so the, the districts that, the districts that had K, that had this going already, you can still do, right? They just shut it off to, to new ones. Is that how it works?
Laura, could I clarify for you? Would that be helpful?
Please, Melissa.
Okay, thank you. The, what the law says with respect to online schools is that I, I'm with, I'm sorry, with respect to open enrollment is that it is where the school is physically located and where you would be physically attending. So because online is not, you're not physically attending in that district, then it's not available to online enrollment. There is a possibility to have online charter schools, but the D P I is no longer granting charters for online virtual charter schools. So that is really the only way you can open enroll into an online school is through those charter schools. But they are not granting any more charter schools. So K J cannot be a charter school. And during the pandemic, as Vicky said, the, put a pause on the requirement of the, the brick and mortar school and attending in a school district.
Thank you, Melissa. Go ahead, Lynn.
Question for one of you ladies. So in a different school district, if a child wants to attend that, is it, is it W E N, the Wisconsin? If they want to attend that, does the school district pay money to the state for that? No?
Oh, sorry. No, we, we pay it directly to the Wisconsin E School Network.
That's my question. If a child in any school district in Wisconsin wants to attend that W E N, Wisconsin E network thing. Okay, that money goes to, okay, that goes to the charter school itself. Okay. So it's not that the state of Wisconsin is capturing any of that money. Okay.
All right. We've had a nice, long and productive discussion. I think that brings that to an end. We're moving on now to the Act 20 update and our, our plans for compliance. It's all about compliance.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to bring forward some of the progress that the Department of Public Instruction has made in the recent months. Last time we were here was in July. I'm going to highlight for the sake of time, key decisions that relate to the early reading professional learning, also assessments and just some of the progress at D P I and structural progresses they've made. The first piece that they have confirmed that half of the statewide coaches will be assigned to schools with the lowest percentage of learners scoring proficient in literacy on the state assessments and greatest gaps. So they have the 20 coaches. They will then disperse and use your state assessment data then to offer coaches to districts. And then there'll be a process that we'll share at a different date. The other piece, D P I has announced their nine member early literacy curriculum council. With their new movement, they've extended their date for what was going to be a list of resources that a district who intends to make application for up to 50% of the overall cost of the resource would have to take from that list. That list will not be ready now until the end of January. It was December 1st. And that will be the end of January. It's also important to, this is where I think it's really important is that the school boards retain the independent authority to select the early literacy instructional materials that they will adopt and implement. This should sound really familiar to us because this is what we do. This is how we, we adopt all of our curriculum and resources. So what the Department of Public Instruction has asked is that school districts should review their existing curriculums against the definition of the science-based early literacy instruction to determine whether their instructional materials and practices meet the requirement. In a nutshell, the, it's very explicitly clear what the base, the science-based early literacy instruction components are. We have, we work with a lot of vendors. We're always trying to get our business. They know them, just waiting for D P I to make a final decision. We also have been in contact with D P I with the two resources that are currently, we're going, we're currently reviewing as potential resources. We have determined that we will continue our resource review as followed under the guidance of the Act 20. So we'll follow all of the regulations, but for Act 20, but move forward because they did meet the criteria for science-based literacy resources. Okay. The next piece, the required professional learning on science-based early literacy training, a big change. Initially, you had to be totally, your staff would have to be trained by seven, one, by July 1, 2025. And they've changed the legislation to reflect that you have to start that training by 2025, which letters is, it's also on our agenda tonight, so I'm just going to quick go there. The letters, resources that we currently use for our pre-K K is also the, they have rewritten it for K three. They've also rewritten the principals course and the trainer, trainer, coaches course. And that is, we would like to get that started as soon as possible. And that will be in, I think, our next motion. But keeping in mind, that was, that was mentioned by name in legislation when they passed that. The next piece, D P I, big assessment pieces that will be interesting to follow. The Department of Public Instruction is going through their formal state procurement process to determine a single reading readiness screener to be administered to students in pre-K two times a year. We already have an assessment. We currently could choose which one we'd want. D P I is coming through with Act 20 and they're going to tell us across the state which assessment that they will use. So that's that early screener assessment to be watching for. The other piece that is a single universal screener that will be administered for students in K three. Again, single means everyone in the state will give that same assessment for a universal screener now. And then last but not least, after the Department of Public Instruction selects their universal screener, that, then they will give us a list. They will develop a list for districts to choose their diagnostic assessments from. So there's various components of the Act 20 depending on specific requirements that have yet to be determined by the Department of Public Instruction, but I'm going to give everyone out there a hot tip. The Department of Public Instruction has a website that's just for Act 20. And it's very informative. That's where we go. That's where the communication between school districts and their updated, updates to the legislation and what they approve. That's all kept there and kept up to date. And what's very accommodating is it's written in plain language. So there's not a lot of educational jargon. So we will share that. You had that in your memo. It's really a wonderful resource to use.
Sure. All right, unless anyone has. Go ahead.
So in order for us to balance all of these requirements and to not have the burden all fall at one time, we are, we are requesting to move forward with the adoption of letters as the language essentials for teaching, reading and spelling. We're requesting that that's going to be our, that's approved to be our professional development. Professional development practice course tools that we'll be using. And it also obviously meets the identified Act 20 for both coaches and administrators and teachers. And it's also credited by the Dyslexia Association. We are, we have chosen to adopt a trainer, trainer model. Number one, it's sustainable. Number two, it allows for our schools to move at the pace and to differentiate. The curriculum will be the same, the course will be the same, the certification, they still have to follow the modules as set forth in, in letters, but at least our, our principals and their building leadership teams and literacy coaches will be able to flex the professional development over the next two years for our staff. But for that to happen, we have to make sure that we get our coaches and our principals through their year of training prior. And then they will leave teachers and, and then when we get new staff, we can sustain it. We can sustain this, this practice of professional learning. That, any questions on that trainer, trainer model?
James.
I was going to ask a question. I think you touched on it, but I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. How long is this course? Right? I'm, I'm looking at this cost and the number of people we want to, and then you just said, take the trainers through their year of training. Can you describe the nature of the course? How many sessions or the, the commitment?
So it's, it's set up in different modules. And if you go with the trainer from letters, they set up in a consultant with you to go through module by module based on their pacing of getting that done in typically one year. However, if we go with a trainer, a trainer, because D P I does not have that one-year deadline anymore, it's to start in 2025. We would have a two-year period to complete this entire course and go much deeper with the understanding and the methodologies and the, that really the instructional practices for teaching science-based learning. So it, we will be using this over a two-year period. What we did, Mr. Larry, we actually, in the cost, added an extension for each of our teachers' courses so that it's, I believe it was $99 an extension. So that we could take this over a two-year period of time rather than just make this, do it to do it, like a checkoff piece. We really want to give teachers the opportunity and administrators to go very deep in understanding the theory of this learning as we apply it moving forward.
Anybody else? Good.
So in looking at the different categories, there's three, right? Can, do you have on hand like the numbers associated with that? How many teachers slash coaches are we talking about? K three, K through three educators versus literary coaches? Do you have that breakdown?
Yes, we do. And I can provide that. I'm sure Linda's right behind me thinking, yes, I can give you that in 10 seconds. But we can certainly send that to you. We have that all broken down.
Follow up with James' question. Wouldn't it be every K three teacher in the district?
Every K three teacher in the district will go through the training, including coaches and interventionists. So any educator working and servicing a K three student will have to go through the professional learning letter. So our special education, our multi-language program, all of our K three teachers, that would be your teacher pool. And then you have your coaches and your administrators, all administrators who teach or oversee a K three elementary school would also have to go through their training.
So I, I'm trying to understand train the trainers model then, right? Because which, no, which curriculum are you talking about? I agree that everyone is going to go through the training, but who's leading the training? I, I understood it would be one of our coaches that went through a set of modules that deliver the training versus the agents.
You're correct. I'm sorry for bringing confusion. Our coaches will be training our teachers, but letters organization will be training our administrators and our coaches. That's why they're going out a year early.
Just one follow up. Now I won't ask any more questions. The $210,000, does that provide us access to the The two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, does that provide us access to the curriculum for the two-year period? So that we can train? Is that the cost that we're talking about? Thank you.
So what you're asking us to do in two weeks is to approve the three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars for this two-year training program. And it's gonna be paid for by ESSER funds. How long are those ESSER funds going to be available?
Yeah, it expires uh at the end of August of twenty-four. Laura. Will any teachers be certified as trainers?
At this time, we'll have just our literacy coaches. I'm not saying that. There wouldn't be a time in the future that we would have teachers trained as trainers.
Literacy coaches are, they have been in the classroom, they're teachers that have been in the classroom?
They still are in the teachers' pool. So they are all teachers.
Go ahead.
Just to verify and please correct me if I'm wrong, the new letters program is dyslexia certified?
You're correct. Yes, it is. Great question.
Anybody else?
I just had a quick follow-up question.
Please.
Um. And you're saying like specifically this would be used in like, uh please correct me if I'm wrong again, the. Like the preschool teaching and like teaching how to spelling and write, correct?
That is correct, and it will be used in, we already have it in for our four-year-old program. Under the new law, Act twenty, we have to offer, we will be offering letters training for all teachers. From kindergarten first, second, and third grade. So all students would be taught. Those skills in that, in that theory of learning. So skills and strategies that are associated with letters, all students in K three would be taught.
Go ahead.
So when I look at this and when I saw this, and I have talked to people in the district about this, um, uh this is good money. Right? Th- this is important and, and it's the tip of the spear. And as many of our teachers that can deliver this curriculum in an expert fashion, the better. Right? So as I look at this and over the next two weeks, um, you know, in that literary, literacy coach. Line to, I think Laura's point, you know, recognizing that as many of. Uh. Please don't um come at with like minimum requests or how we've done business, right? If there are opportunities to increase the number of coaches, right? And if that serves the district, I, I'd like to see that number because, you know, this is. You know, something that is our product, right? It is what we do. And so. I don't want the district to feel like they are in some way constrained when putting this uh proposal together.
Go ahead.
Um, I know you said that specifically you were wanting to put this in with K through three educators. And my point kind of going back to is the, the whole dyslexia thing. Um if this, because every, every kid with dyslexia is different. Um if this does not work out with every kid, will they have, will? The teachers or the district have another resource? That we can then use to support the kids with dyslexia who are not benefiting from this program?
We need to sign her up in education. Wonderful question. And yes, this is the uh professional learning. And that meets the criteria under the new law, but we have used it in the past and have had great success with it. But there will be a plethora of different interventions and uh new adoption at our universal level. Uh to meet and will meet uh various students' learning needs. Um and they were, they're all dyslexic approved.
And.
You keep um uh emphasizing K three. But um just help me, because I've never been an elementary teacher. When this new curriculum that is based on science of reading is approved, is chosen and approved. It's going to go all the way through grade eight, correct?
That is correct. And so this is a supplemental, but very important professional development that will accompany. Our new resource adoption. Um. So I'll leave it there right now because I don't wanna let all of the cat out of the bag. The majority of the implementation of letters in the elementary schools. Will be coming from the school directors and the building principals. If they want to extend that into grades four or five, so they can have a comprehensive professional development as a whole school. But that's, that's in the infancy stages right now, uh but it's not required under Act twenty. We need to get started on our two biggest pieces. Our, our coaches being trained and our administrators being trained so we can get this movement going, so we can then decide. Who else we want to include in the training.
I have a question. It's not so much a question as a, um. Would you agree that it's hard to exaggerate kind of this huge scope and scale of what this work is gonna be?
Yes, I try not to think about that. Uh what I try to do is just chunk it and know, well, we have some really wonderful. Components in place. We've already spent two years researching a universal resource. It's going through a very. In-depth process with a lot of input. Uh teachers will be selecting which of those resources will be moving forward. There'll be a lot of professional development there, so. Thank goodness that we have that already started. That, then it would be very daunting. Letters we're familiar with because we've used it in the past. But there are other, there are other parts in the legislation, like the new assessments, right? It's nothing we can't handle. It's just we have to make sure that we're looking to the future and using the opportune time. The just right time to bring these components in and still meet the requirements under this, under the Act.
It's, um, I think it's just really important to acknowledge what, what this is. And how it's gonna take years and how it's mandated. We can't opt out. Um, I have shared with a couple people here about um experience I had, not this last weekend, but the weekend before at a conference. Where um this Act twenty was on the agenda for the day. And there was a presentation. Um by an expert. And then there was a question and answer time. And this is a room full of school board members from across the state. Little schools, big schools, you know, just uh maybe a couple hundred people in this room. Um, and as they ask their questions about this, about this change, a sea change in how we. Teach um reading as a state, the, the level of anxiety around this. Ho- how are we gonna pay for it was the biggest one. What can we expect from the state in terms of funding? Um, you know, uh, the desperate need to get at it because there's these, you know, these deadlines and all this stuff. With all these unanswered questions from the state of Wisconsin, right? It was just really, really um compelling and um. I, I don't know. I, I, I had a lot of sympathy, especially for some of the smaller schools with very restricted um resources and staffing. How, they're like, how are we gonna do this? And they don't even know, some of them, they're, they'll get there, I suppose eventually, but. I think we're lucky in this district and that we have so many eyes on this work and so many people um ready to roll up their sleeves and get at it. But it won't, even with all the resources that we have, it isn't gonna be easy. And I just wanna. Thank you for the work that you've done so far and for the work you're gonna do in the future.
Thank you. As long as the board continues to support the use of ESSER funds, we should not feel this at the district level. And that's one of the reasons why we wanna get these key components out there. March, we'll be bringing our adoption. Uh for the universal. And then there's just big pieces that we can put out there and use ESSER money for.
Okay. Brian.
Recognizing the amount of training that's gonna take and. Valuing the pressure that I'm sure our K five educators are under and the nervousness with this, I'm hoping that. Through professional development, we recognize that the plate is only so big. And we've addressed this before as far as making sure that we are valuing professional development time. Valuing meeting time and valuing our educators' time. So. This is gonna be a big thing thrown on the plate and I expect to hopefully see other things. That may not be as high a priority shifted, so our educators are not being meetinged out. Overtrained on things that may not be as pressing on this and that there's some give and take on that. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I promise this is my last question. Um, Brian, I completely agree with what you said, by the way, um with kind of. I'm speaking from a teacher kid point of view here. Um, I know you said that we've used this resource before. Um, well, if we do, uh you know, we are gonna implement this new resource, but. Is this gonna be an easy transition for teachers or is it gonna be more difficult in a way that? They, it's all gonna be piled on them to then to get this training done and then be able to teach it. To a bunch of five, six, seven, and eight-year-olds.
And that is another excellent question. And it actually leads very closely to. The a- ask over here, and that is, um. It's going to be paced out so that we're gonna have, the professional development is gonna be over a two-year period. And so that it doesn't feel like it, it's a daunting task. And for some of our staff who have been with the district for multiple years, they've gone through very much alike. Uh letters training in the past, professional development in the foundations of learning literacy. So. There'll be anyone new, it'll be new, and it is a new course, and we're, and it's extending into K three now. But yes, it will be, we'll take into respect the depth of uh change or the depth of knowledge needed to implement this.
So just to verify, you're saying that teachers, it'll be spread out so that they're not overwhelmed. And that they're not feeling like, oh, this is something brand new, because we've obviously used it before. Um, and so that it, they're feel comfortable teaching it and that they could teach it in a way that. Um benefits the students, that they can actually learn from the, from this, if I'm correct.
You are correct. That, that, that's the whole piece is to meet the individual needs of students.
Ryan, do you really wanna try to follow that up?
You know, I was just thinking, I'm like, I'm hoping she's not gonna run for my seat if I choose to run again. Um. This will also be done in collaboration with, as we have a great history in this district. The discussion, the rollout, I'm sure GBA and other groups will be with the discussion and input and between the two groups. Thank you.
Andrew.
Um, I just wanna say too that uh going off what um Brian was saying, I think there, we, we do have to keep. Um, I, I think we have improved over the years about teachers getting meetinged out and meeting creep, but if this is something that for. A- and some, some teachers may need more, um more time with the training on this new material than, than others. I just wanna make sure that we're not. Um, just get my two cents worth in as well, that we're not uh over meeting people. If the, if meetings are gonna be about this, then that's probably that teacher's most important. Me, use of, of meeting, uh scheduled meeting time.
Okay, um, I think we can move on from there. Um, thank you very much. The next uh under operations is strategic planning.
Good evening.
We're gonna have, I believe, uh Josh is coming to the table too, right?
No, not on this.
Not yet? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm just over here. I'm so ecstatic. Excellent questions, excellent questions. Um, so, excuse me, board. So in uh twenty thirteen, just give you a little background history. In twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year, the Board of Education engaged. In a process to create a mission and a vision statement. Uh and develop a strategic roadmap. Well, that's due up uh as of twenty twenty-three. Um, so what I've done was I engaged uh the Wisconsin Association of School Board members. Uh Ms. Cheryl Patty, uh Cheryl and Patty, the one who did our board retreat. Um, and they're gonna contract with them so that we can start the roadmap. And the strategic planning process starting in December. So by this uh tw- March of twenty twenty-four. We'll be able to present a new strategic roadmap um for, to the board for approval.
Okay. So this, that question, this will be staff-driven or will this be board-driven?
No, this will be community-driven.
Okay.
This be community, teachers, uh students, uh families. This would be driven by that piece as well. So uh the strategic roadmap in the courts board uh be a part of that process as well. So it would be a collaboration of everyone.
Okay, facilitated by uh uh with WASB staff.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. James.
So December is a couple weeks away. Is there a schedule that can be viewed or so we can understand? Scope, impact. Usually when we take on these initiatives, we, we, we understand, um, you know, the, the scheduling. You know, primary concern, holidays, right? And, and December and access to some of the stakeholders and the community. But also looking at um the creation and initiation of multiple uh committees. Um during the same timeframe, I'd, I'd like to kind of see how everything works together. So uh to parent others, where you don't get meetinged out, um and that we were able to focus on things.
So I already have a proposal and uh so I sent it to uh um Alyssa and it's been approved through that way, so I'll send you out. The uh twelve-page proposal that they sent to us.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to. Uh District Enrollment Projection Book, and I believe we're gonna hear from um Josh. On, actually on the next few items.
I've got a couple um in a row here. The next two items are kind of annual items. Good to start with the projection book. Um, I, I'm not going to go into a ton of detail here because it's, you know, well over a hundred pages long. Um, you can peruse it at your own leisure. Um, just to highlight some things. Um, beginning on page four talks about a math methodology. What we do is we use birth rates. And then we use kind of the history of how well at each school we convert kids from grade level to grade level. Um, that's called a grade progression ratio, sometimes called a cohort survival rate. Um, those two factors together will, will generate the um, the projections. To go down to page seven, this is, if you, if you don't read anything else in here, this is the most important page here. This shows at the bottom, the total district births. Going back to oh-eight, oh-nine. Um, you can see we've been on a steady downward trend. Um. It uh, hopefully we're bottoming out at this point, right? But um we still have cohorts progressing through, right? So eve- even if. The, the birth rate flattened out, we'd still be seeing declining enrollment over probably the next ten years as larger. Classes leave the district, the new classes are smaller, right? See, the kindergartners that are replacing the seniors, there are fewer of them. Um, this is primarily what's driving our, our low enrollment or our declining enrollment. Heading over to page nine, oh, you know what? I'm gonna share my screen. Sorry about that. And of course, you can't actually read this one on my, on my screen, but um this summarizes for, for every school in the district. The um, the expected growth percentages. Um, there is a, a both a five-year and a ten-year percentage noted there. Um, if you, if you take a look, Baird is the only school with a five-year positive um growth projection. Um, and that's basically flat. Now I do wanna note that um. We started this book prior to the consolidation uh decisions that the board made. And then also this is. Like the twenty-three, twenty-four book. So you will, you will see schools represented that um. That will be consolidated in our, our pro- our projection book in future years. If we head down to page. Fifteen, this is an example of that you'll see for every. that you'll see for every single school. You'll see a capacity number, which is usually a flat line, that is kind of a, a realistic utilization number. So we've talked a lot about capacities in the last couple of years. This is, there are a number of ways to look at it, but basically, this is based on how the school is configured right now. This is how many kids we could fit in, um, comfortably. And comply with board policy on class sizes. Um, you'll see, the, the dark blue is an enrollment history. The pink is the projection, you'll see this for every school. If there are K eights, you'll see them split into a K five portion and then a six-eight portion. So for, for example, uh, Red Smith will exist on two pages. Heading down to page sixty-six, um, you can see the enrollment projections by quadrant. So th- this kinda takes all the schools and um, and sums them up by quadrant on on the uh, on page seventy-one, we'll get the overall district. Um, this one, we we do um, frequently screenshot, this one that we're looking at here is elementary. You'll see there'll be elementary, middle, and high. Right, so we've been, we've been feeling kind of that steep decline at the elementary level. And it'll begin to flatten out, but eventually those court, those cohorts are gonna make their way into the secondary level. And we'll begin to s- see a steep decline unless something uh, drastically changes here. On page seventy-six, you'll see um, a comparison of different ways of looking at things. So you can either go through this exercise for every school, add everything up. You get one projection, you can look at the history for a particular quadrant, get a different one, and then at the district level. So the kind of three different ways of, of looking at things here. Again, you're looking at um, elementary in this particular graph, but we'll have three of them. And then finally, on page eighty-one, you'll see the feeder pattern, and again, this was created prior to the consolidation um, decisions. So when you see tank on there, I, I believe the decision that the board made would um, see tank going to obviously into Lincoln Franklin. And then west, there's a portion of tank currently that heads over to Lombardi and Southwest. So that will be changing for next year. So those are enrollment projections, if you have any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer them or write them down and get you answers later. Brian, oh, I'm sorry.
Not at all.
You're running this.
Let's leave it that bad. Um, as far as the enrollment, we've had community members that have reached out to us that have talked about um, population shifts with groups of people moving to Green Bay. Does this take into account that, or is there a way to accurately measure that possibility with um, students coming in from other areas of the country? Any shifts that we can see that, that is predicted, is there a methodology for that, since this is based on birth rate in the area?
No, that, that's very hard to predict, um, and I, I do believe, now I'm giving my own opinion here. In addition to the declining birth rates, one of the things that dramatically drove our declining enrollment was um, change in migration patterns, um, beginning in the late twenty teens. Um, and something like that, the, the model is, is not sensitive to that. You know, if, if there were something that we knew was coming and we, we could predict, um, we would build it in. Um, but natively, it, it does not do that, it just looks at how things have been in the past and, and expects them to continue in the future.
Are there any models, or, I mean, it's, it's obviously, we have information here that is provided within the county and within the state. Do you know of any accepted models that do predict that, or is it, it's just difficult to predict?
I'm not aware of any, this is actually a pretty sophisticated model as far as um, the school districts go. Some school districts will, I mean, they'll actually go and, and they do what's called a child find, and they'll find every kid. Um, that's obviously not available to us. We, we did, two years ago, engage cooperative strategies, they're, they're helping us with the boundaries study. Um, they did, they did an analysis that included pulling building permits, talking to um, the municipalities about expected um, residential developments. Um, they took a look at our housing stock to see, okay, apartments generally produce this many kids. And apartments that are ten years old produce this many kids. Um, so that did kind of, that additional analysis basically just confirmed what we saw. Um, but it, I mean, if there's some sort of like catastrophic event or, or something like that, we wouldn't be able to predict that.
And I'm glad you brought up the other studies and how they do match up, cuz I remember receiving that information, being amazed at how in-depth and accurate we're, we're trying to make this prediction with dealing with human beings, which, you know, it's, it's difficult when people move and everything. So thank you for bringing that back up, and I'd say that we, we did our best ability with that when we looked into the building permits and that report that we received, so, thank you.
Yeah, these are, these are good formulas based on the um, you know, based on what we've been seeing, they, they've proven to be you know, quite accurate, but there are certainly variables that I don't know how you could really, what you could really do other than um, manually make adjustments. I mean, one, one thing, it could, I mean, there are catastrophic reasons that could cause people to leave. It also could be that if we um, if, if and when as a community, we uh, get in a better place with having affordable housing, if, if it's here that makes a difference versus if it's, if it's not here and if it's in a neighboring district, then it makes a difference the, the other way. So there are, I would, I would think with there being perhaps more, more momentum towards um, affordable housing, you know, that could be something, especially if, if we do get some movement in that, and it's in our district and not in surrounding districts, that's probably a, could reverse some of these trends. But not anything that we, you know, yet could alter numbers for.
Is this something that is done on a regular basis periodically, and is it mandated?
It is not mandated, um, it is done on a, on a regular basis, we do it here um, in the district annually, this particular. We do it every year, um, the, and the reason why I'm coming to you here in November is we to, to really finalize things, we need to have that third, that third Friday of September count kind of solidified, um, before we can plug everything in and, and uh, create the projections, but yeah, we do it every year.
And is there something we that you're asking of us, or you just provided, I have, I want you to know, I read every page of it, I really did. I actually missed the pack of game. I got so engrossed, I forgot, there was a ballgame. But anyway, um, is there something you ask of us, or you're just giving us this?
No, we pre- we present this every year, it's important information, um, for you to do your jobs, I think. And um, it, it impacts our, our revenue directly, and we're about to talk about membership and its effect on revenue.
Alright, if there are no more questions, you, you look like you might have a question.
Um, just out of curiosity here, would these numbers that you projected pertain to when we do have school closures next year, would these projections like, kind of see like more enrollment in schools that we need enrollment in, like with these num- I know these numbers would change, but would it be a problem if they changed? Is, I guess, what I'm asking.
That's a good question, um, you, you will see, next year's projections will look different. You'll see um, you'll see the, the schools that have received students. You'll see them climb in enrollment closer to their capacity rate, um, because we're eliminating um, empty seats here by, by doing those consolidations, so you will see a change. Really, it's just going to combine, um, the, the consolidations that have been approved so far are, are not very difficult to handle from this model's perspective. If um, there are consolidations in the future that, say, split, um, split attendance boundary or, or something like that. Um, we're, we're gonna need to figure something out, because um, the, the model's not, not built to handle that. So we would ne- need to make a manual adjustment.
Just a quick follow-up question on that, um, add, uh, the projections that we have right now. Do we see any problems as of next year with these school closures? Like, do we like, with these, the kids that are then being consolidated into other schools? Do we have any problems with attendance issues or number of students in the classroom?
Um, the consolidations that have been approved by the boards so far, um, don't result in too many kids in any particular building, if, if that's your question.
Yeah, would it, it, that partly answers my question, um, would, would there be any like, would there be too many kids per classroom, would there be like attendance issues if these kids were not able to come because of where they lived and the school that they were now being consolidated into? Do, do we kind of know where that's going in that direction? It's okay if you can't answer my questions, okay?
No, it, it's, it is a good question, so the, the projections are about um, enrollment, not about attendance. Right, so we have a lot of kids that are enrolled that don't come to school very often.
Sorry, um, yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the kids that will be en- enrolled in different schools next year, do we have a problem with the number of kids that are gonna be in the schools that they're consolidated with?
I don't believe that the consolidations will result in over full schools or over full classrooms.
Uh, to be, to be more, more specific, um, barring something highly irregular or unusual, like thirty or forty families just zoom moving into one particular area that will not happen because we, all of the, all of these mergers that we've approved for next year clearly accommodated all the kids into the school with at least some cushion, correct?
Yes.
And staff to, and enough staff to accommodate them as well.
I just wanted to share that that's what makes our job kind of difficult, and well, the administration and, and the board. Because you do have to take all of that into consideration and to make sure that there's transportation, everything available for those. But I appreciate you asking the question and looking out for students.
I, I completely understand, I, I do understand where you guys are coming from with how difficult your job is. And I do thank you guys for working as hard as you are to try to figure this out. And I mean, along the way, we are gonna have challenges and people who don't like what we're doing, but in the end, we can't make everybody happy. And we're trying to do what's best for the students in the end.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna chime in on the um, on the projection booklet? Otherwise, we can ease into, ease into um, see the membership numbers update.
This is another report, um, that is done at least annually, sometimes by, by annually, semi-annually. Um, but for sure, it happens around this time of year, because again, we have that, that important count date on the third Friday in September, that's a, that's a very important date in Wisconsin. Um, there are two count dates for public school, there's the third Friday in September this year, that's on the fifteenth, second Friday in January. This year, that's on January twelfth. So, we have to certify the results with DPI two weeks after the count date. Um, we could continue to make provisions, and we will a couple times a year. Um, we revise September counts to January, and then both the September and January counts in June. So um, these are the numbers now, um, they will increase between now and then, that has been our experience. So, big news, this slide used to be, stayed the same all the time, but I got to change a number on it. Um, the revenue limit law in Wisconsin gives Green Bay now eleven thousand dollars pull it for every full-time FTE. Um, in this, the, the number of FTE or students um, is averaged over a three-year period. So that helps smooth out increases and decreases over time. Um, and FTE is, well, we're gonna get to what FTEs are. So, membership count, there are four components, there's the head count, that's the eligible students who are in attendance on that day. In attendance is very important, we'll talk about that in a moment. Um, you add in the kids that open and roll out. You take out the kids that are open and rolled in, and then there's a small number of um, what they call resident reductions, which are um, which are fairly rare, that gives you the membership count. So our aid and our um, our levy is based on the membership FTE, so that's the same formula as the count. But instead of counting early childhood, three-year-olds as a full kid, you count them as half a kid. And instead of counting four K as a whole kid, you count them as sixty percent of a kid. All other grades K through twelve are at one, one point O cuz they're full day, full, full day.
I'm never gonna understand that.
I, I think it's because they don't attend the whole day. Okay, here we go, so membership counts, this is the history, so you have the, the count, and then the FTE, the FTEs always could be lower than the count. Um, the FTEs always could be lower than the count because um, because we apply those factors, point five, point six. So, this is going back to September of twenty sixteen. Um, you can see kind of a steady decline, flattened out for just a minute, then COVID, and then we're, we're back kind of on the same trajectory here. Open enrollment is the second component, the second and third components of um, determining your count. Right, so we, remember, we add, it's counterintuitive, so we add in the kids that leave us, and we take out the kids that are coming to us. And the reason is that um, the, the homeschool district levies and receives aid for those students. And then that revenue it gets transferred over to the, the um, the district that's receiving them.
So can we just, I just wanna point out that, that as long as I've been on the board, and it looks like, you know, well, for, for a while now, that number of kids who, from other districts who choice into Green Bay has hovered around five hundred. And I think most, you know, the diet, you know, most of the narrative is that it, it, it's just kids leaving. But we actually do attract a, a sizable amount of kids into our district from the districts around us, so just wanted to pause and note that, thank you.
We do, both of these numbers have been extremely stable, at least going back to twenty sixteen, hovering, yeah, right around five hundred for kids coming in. About twenty-one, twenty-two hundred of kids going out. Okay, head count, this is, this is the head count, this is kind of uh, the butts in the seats, so to, so to say. Um, you can see there's been a, a steady decline over since twenty sixteen. I'm continuing to show this, this is a slide I made during COVID. Um, it's very interesting, that the head count for grades one through twelve has followed this really steady trajectory, um, just like this slow bleed downwards. Um, three, four, and five-year-olds. So a huge drop, um and it never really rebounded after COVID. We didn't see a corresponding drop in grades one through twelve. So um, you can see kind of the history broken down between our three, four and five year olds and then our grades one through twelve. Okay, these are the rules about counting. You can only count a student if they're in attendance on that date. Can only count them if they're in attendance on that date. If they're absent, then they could still be counted if they were confirmed there. Once before the date and once sometime after the date. Um, and then also they had to, had to maintain a continuous enrollment in that span. Um, be, because of this, this account or this count is always changing and it's going to increase. We're gonna probably pick up a. Hundred, two hundred kids over the course of the year as they were absent on the third Friday and then. They'll show up at school again. Okay, I wanna get into vouchers and charters. So the voucher reimbursement rates, um, you're aware, I'll just remind you, I know Angie had. Told you this in her presentation on the budget, uh, K through eight, nine thousand eight hundred ninety-three, nine through twelve. It's twelve thousand three hundred eighty-seven. Remember, our, our per people is eleven thousand. Special needs scholarship program, fifty thousand, sixty-five dollars. Independent charter schools. Um, that rate per student is eleven thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars. Again, we're at eleven thousand. So um, the district had fifteen, fifty-seven students attended an independent charter school in twenty-two, twenty-three. And sixty-five students in twenty-three, twenty-four. This is actually one of those weird unpredictable things that showed up in our enrollment. Um, when New Leaf Academy opened three years ago, four years ago, all of a sudden, we had. These kids that were missing, basically, um, that we hadn't been expected or we hadn't expected. Um, right now, it's kind of leveled off at this point. So if we, if we look at uh voucher rates, this is the history going back to fifteen, sixteen. The SNSP program was introduced in eighteen nineteen. Um, you can see they got a significant boost here in the twenty-three, twenty-four. School year for the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium in the state budget. This graph shows the, okay, so the blue bar is basically the number of vouchers available to students living within our district. The red bar is the number of vouchers taken. And the yellow is the levy for voucher payments that the district um. That the district shells out. So some good news, bad news here, right? Um, good news is. The total number of vouchers actually being taken is, has kind of um leveled off. And it's nowhere near the, the cap, right? They're not maxing out the total number of vouchers available. So. That's good news because a few years ago, we weren't sure. What that ceiling kind of was and kind of looming over all of this, and eventually there's gonna be no cap. Eventually, there'll be no cap and we didn't know what to expect. Um, so it doesn't seem like the cap is affecting. The higher caps right now are affecting the number of vouchers being taken. Now, what has changed is the revenue has just. Kind of skyrocketed even though there's, or I'm sorry, the expenditure for, for voucher payments. Has skyrocketed even though the um, the number of vouchers being accepted has remained pretty flat and that. Is completely due to. This large increase here um. In, in the most recent state budget.
So according to this um. This chart, we lose eleven point five million to vouchers? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So the. Kind of. So um, there are eleven point five million dollars in voucher um, in vouchers claimed. The way that mechanism works is the state has the district levy. For that, and then our aid is reduced by, by that amount. So they make us levy eleven point five dollars from the property taxpayers. And then they reduce the state aid. So those vouchers, it's, it's completely on the back of our property taxpayers. Um.
Do you think our taxpayers know that generally?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't be asking you to speak for all taxpayers, but. These are, this is, these are things I wonder about myself, I guess.
Right. If, if you look at the levies though, right, at eleven point five million dollars this year and our total levy is a hundred, hundred nine million. It's about ten and a half percent. Our mill rate is eight dollars and twenty-six cents this year, eighty-seven cents of that mill rate is going. Um, going to vouchers. And here you can see over, over the course of the voucher program, the, the change in the levy. Um, the district levy versus the voucher levy. Um, and again, a significant increase. In twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So recognizing once again, the, the poll on vouchers in the school district. And how it impacts our deficit that we have. And this doesn't even take into consideration any of the transportation costs or any other services that we provide to. Neighbor, or well, to voucher schools.
Are required.
Are required to. So I'm just, I'm just saying that so everyone in the audience can hear that as well, that this eleven million dollars. Ties into it and doesn't even take into consideration our transportation costs and other services that we provide. So. So I make sure everyone's got that.
And that money is bundled into schools that do not have elected school boards to oversee that money or really. Just any, almost any transparency to the taxpayers who are funding it.
Can, can I real quick address something that Brian said? Um, the vouchers don't directly impact our deficit. They don't. We, it's a, it's a straight, we levy for that amount. It's reduced in our, in our aid. So now to the extent that vouchers attract students away from us and we could have been getting revenue for them, yeah, it. It might impact our deficit if you look at it that way, but the vouchers themselves don't impact our deficit.
Looking at the numbers, yes, and thank you.
And I do believe this is the kind of information that Denise Gomer Hutchison was talking about that she would like taxpayers to see in the future.
Go ahead, Josh. Okay. Um, are there any other questions? Anybody else want to? Chime in? Okay, um, I think we're done. Thank you, Josh. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the resolution um that we're considering regarding vouchers. Um. You all have a copy of this, I believe. Think you can review it. We'll be voting on this in a couple of weeks. Um, quite a lot of thought has been put into this. This is, I just wanna, just to kind of give some background on this. Um. This is happening around the state. People are starting to kind of wake up, especially after this last budget, um. This last state budget to the complexities of how we, we fund edu-, um, public education in the state. And the just enormously detrimental effect that vouchers have on funding. Um. I think we should probably keep our discussion regarding this to just our, our local, our, uh, the local impact. But it, this is happening across the state. No one is untouched by this. Um, well, almost no districts are untouched by this. So um. Kinsey, can you put that up on the screen? Okay. I don't know if anyone can read that, but um. So I'm just gonna open up the, the um, open up the discussion if anyone has any questions um or wants to speak. Go ahead, Lynn.
I have read this and it seems to me that this is simply um, asking the city of Green Bay to, to make. These things transparent on our tax bill. I support this a hundred percent.
It's hard to imagine why someone wouldn't want to know where their tax dollars are going. So, anyone else? James.
So have we approached city and do we know if they're receptive to this type of resolution?
I don't know that there's been anything official. Claude, have you had any um, official conversations with anybody from the city regarding? This resolution? I haven't, yeah. I mean, granted, um, you know, they would, they would have to um, help us with. Um, help us with this and that would be, I think, left up to a vote with this, from the city council. So whether or not they'd wanna go ahead with that. Um, but for now, it's, it's, it's um, as a board, um. We're gonna have this discussion and have this vote. So. Um, anybody? Go ahead.
So we often direct people listening to the actions that they can take to inform and to participate. And, and local decisions and we can provide information. But those that are listening can call their city council individuals and make sure that if this ever comes to a vote. That they can express their desire to support a resolution like this.
Good, Brian.
So I wanna clarify, we don't really direct anyone. We just. Mention where funding decisions and things are made and we, well, you know, being involved constituents is always good. And this is definitely something that the majority of us. Looking as a board and assuming that it passes gives us the authority to contact them as a board member. And in my opinion, and says, this is what the board has agreed to as opposed to, this is what Brian Mills thinks. So. I think that's a fantastic part of this and encourage all of our board members to utilize that opportunity if this passes.
I've had a few conversations with people in various places, um, in various venues around the city. Um. And when I explain this to them, they're often shocked. They, they can't understand why, why um, you know, their tax dollars are going to places that they can't. They, they don't know about and they can't see. Um, I mean, the city puts out a, a budget and it's all transparent and you can see every line. We put out a budget um, all online. You can see it, every line is transparent to the. To the people who live here and pay taxes here. Um, and so why, why would? Why should that be different? Why should the rules be different for, for um, anybody who receives tax dollars? That's my, my feeling about that. So. At any rate, we're gonna, we're going to uh, have a vote on this in a couple of weeks. That gives us a couple to um, get the word out and to absorb this. Resolution and um. I don't know, does anyone have anything else before we move on? Okay, then we're gonna move on. Uh, the next item is. School start date waiver and Vicky's going to fill us in on that.
Hi, I am here to request permission from the board to apply to the DPI for a waiver. To allow us to start the twenty-four, twenty-five school year prior to September first. The rationale is because of the upcoming NFL draft that will be in Green Bay. We're pretty darn excited about that. And the opportunities it will provide our students and staff. Um, we, for safety reasons. And um. What we project to be a very uh, highly congested traffic pattern over that week. Um, we are. Planning to present to the board a calendar that would have no school on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of the draft. We've been collaborating with Ashwabanon School District. Their board has already given the okay to move forward with the waiver request. Uh, Melissa Field Collar has reached out to the DPI. To gauge their willingness to approve it and they are willing to approve it because these are extraordinary circumstance. Um, so I'm here to answer any questions.
I think we should mark this date as the first time. To my knowledge that we have talked about the draft in any way at the floor table. I can promise it's not gonna be the last time. Um, but I think this might be the correct, some. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, this is, this is gonna be a driver in a, in. A significant amount of decision making over the next year or so. Um, so I, I um, I applaud you guys for thinking well ahead. Um, as we, you know, it, it, you know, there's lots of issues around safety and logistics and um. And we're all really excited about this, but it will affect our students. So, good, Brian.
You mentioned that Ashwabanon had gone forward with this and I would imagine, I don't know if there's collaboration or I'm assuming that superintendent's talk on that. Is there other districts in the county that are also anticipating this? Because I mean, this is gonna impact the whole county that you know of that. If Green Bay requests it, we're kind of the gorilla in the county that other ones may also just look at that as an opportunity.
You just called us gorilla.
Um, I reached out to the Brown County Superintendent's and uh, Ashwabanon at this time is the only one. But I agree with you, this is going to impact districts, I, I said earlier, all the way down to Appleton and as far north as there are hotels.
Lynn?
I, I just want to um, reiterate what Laura said about thanking you for thinking in advance on this. I've read these two documents and I will give you my one hundred percent support on this.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to chime in? All right, thank you, Ms. Byer. Okay, um. Next on the agenda is an update on. Uh, referendum, on referendum projects. Um. Josh is gonna give us, let us know if there's anything. By the way, I saw the aerial views of the baseball fields at Southwest. And um, man, they're just spectacular. Just, they, they look really beautiful from up above.
They, they look beautiful from on the ground as well. If you, if you get a chance while the, the weather is still. Bearable, um, head out back of, of Southwest there because what's being built um is far exceeded my expectations. Um. It is. That, that's a gorgeous athletic complex back there um, that we're building and uh, someday we'll do something about the front of that building.
Is it, will this make it possible for us to host like tournaments and things like that that'll bring a lot of people into our community?
Yeah, we'll definitely be able to um, to host tournaments. Um, and with both of the football fields as well, um, we've kind of oversized the seating capacity there um. To be able to, to do that, to host not only our events, but other events.
I mean, I think it's really important that we invest in our kids in this way. They deserve the best facilities. Um. But also I, I always like this kind of secondary effect of that, which is um, economic uh, impact. When people come into our community for things like tournaments. So anyway, anybody have anything they'd like to?
Well, yeah, so I have.
Go ahead.
I have just, just you, just a couple of updates because not a ton is, is going on. You, obviously you approved the scoreboards and thank you for doing that tonight. Um. Green Bay will be, I mean, we're setting the standard for ourselves with these two scoreboards, but we're gonna be setting the standard for um. For the, the rest of northeast Wisconsin with these scoreboards. Um. The, the video is, is kind of the way of the future and the southern part of the state is more and more of these are popping up, but there aren't too many up here. So um, it's gonna be a great opportunity for our kids, um, for our kids that aren't athletes to get involved in. In those athletic competitions as well. So it's, it's going to be, I think, really neat. Um. We, you will be seeing on the twenty-seventh, a recommendation of um, of an award for the. East High School referendum projects, the um, the renovations there. Um, we just didn't have the recommendation in time to get, to get it posted, otherwise you'd have seen that the special board meeting here. Um, we've advised the, the winning contractor that the intent is to, to select them and we can get working on. Contractual language and things like that, even though it's not uh, it's not official until the twenty-seventh.
Which projects at East?
There are um, quite a few projects at East. Um, so there, there's a, a small renovation of the balcony. In the auditorium. There is um, there's an expansion of the concession stand outside. There is, we're finally gonna fix a storm, a stormwater problem that we're have, we've been having there for, for years. They are getting um a, a pretty substantial locker room renovation as well as um new bleachers in the gym and some updates to the gym. So there's a, there's a lot of stuff going on at East there.
And do, do you have a um estimation as to when the, they can break ground on the um, the, the weights and workout center that we saw rendering of?
Oh, I'm sorry. And yes, that is kind of, that's the most important project. I was, I was trying to remember all of, all of the other ones. Yeah, that, that's the biggest project that is going to result in an addition out, out the back there. So that, that's part of this.
What, what's the timeline on that particular?
Um, probably breaking ground in, in spring, um, construction over the summer.
You think it'll be ready in the fall? You don't have to, I mean, if you don't know.
I don't know at this point.
Okay.
Hope so.
All right, yeah, that'd be great, but, okay.
And, and that brings me to the, the final update that I wanted uh to make is in, that said internally, we're beginning to talk about summer school because we have a number of significant construction projects happening over the summer at Preble Edison East and West in, in particular, um, that could impact summer school. So we need, we need to be working together on that.
Okay. Right. Any questions about Josh's update on referendum projects? Okay. Thank you. Um Okay, next we're gonna talk about the B, uh, plan, a project planning for the District Office Building. Oh, wait a minute.
Twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-twenty-four referendum update and preliminary project list. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, so this is in response to the resolution that you passed back in June. Um, one of them instructed administration to initiate all necessary activities required to prepare a proposed capital referendum question and present it in November. So, and then you give us a, a few things that uh we should be looking at. One of them is building the new elementary school on the site of Kennedy. Obviously, you approved the architectural and design services at your special board meeting today. Um, secure, security upgrades at uh certain schools and other timely priority facility issues as recommended by the master facility planning committee. Um, and then there was originally some language about West High School and John Dewey. Um, that was removed from the resolution on the October twenty-third board meeting. So, we are we put together a slate of projects targeting an amount of a hundred and fifty million dollars. This is an amount we feel comfortable um of, of debt that we can take on without impacting our tax rate. Significantly, I, I will say, uh, odds are we'd be able to keep it flat depending on what goes on with the, the state budget. If they give us another extra thousand bucks, a, a kid like they did this year, that's where it gets a little bit tricky. So I, you never want to commit a hundred percent to that stuff, but in, in in normal years, uh, this is something that we'd be able to take on without impacting the tax rate in act. Um, so we've broken it down into three buckets. The headliner is that West Side Elementary School at sixty-six million dollars. That also will um, will serve our, our energy efficiency commitments. The goal is to build that school net zero because of the board wants to be net zero by twenty-fifty. And we need to take uh, take every opportunity to, to reduce our carpet footprint there. Um, safety and security updates in the amount of approximately seventeen million. These are mostly um school entrance renovations to, to redirect visitors through the office. There's a, there's a major, um, there's a major entrance because you can't really do that at Southwest. I don't know if you've been to Southwest, just where the I know you've been to Southwest. Um, the way, the way that entrance works with the office, it just kind of all needs to be redone. Um, so that is a larger ticket item within that seventeen million. But we've, will be touching, um, I believe all of those schools that you noted above in, in your resolution. I have a question potentially about one of them, but I'll leave that aside for now. Um, this also includes some ADA compliance issues, so um, put that in the category of safety and security. But this is uh handicap doors, um, redesigning bathrooms, um, putting in elevators to give access to different parts of the school for our disabled students.
That's the beauty of a new building where that is all just done. Like you, it, it has, doesn't have to be modified. It's built that way.
It's correct. It's much easier on, on new construction. Um, then we've got renovations at thirty-three million. So these are kind of interior renovations, but also include some larger proj, projects like an auditorium at Red Smith. Red Smith is our, really our only middle school without a um with, without an auditorium. I, I say that with an asterisk because obviously we offer six through eight at, at uh what we would consider non-comprehensive middle schools. The, the idea here is also to expand Lombardi Middle School's commons and kitchens. So currently those kids get split up and some of them eat in the basement, basically, or on the lower level there. Um, so opening, opening that area up, we, we had um we had to address the entrance and the canopy there anyways. So that's a good opportunity to kind of get all that work done along with a regrade and um, and getting some sidewalks in. Um, this is also going to include improvements at Eldo, which would be renovating the old gym into an entrance. And then doing some other um internal renovations, including touching the auditorium there. That's on the second, it's on the second or the third floor. It's kind of an odd setup there at Eldo. And then also at, out at NWTC, TC, the NEW School of Innovation has the opportunity to move from the agriculture building over to the public safety building as that public safety uh program is potentially moving. Uh, we've had some initial conversations with NWTC. This um being able to move NEW over to that public safety building will allow us to actually secure it. Right now we can't. Um, which is a uh, which is an issue for, for our students.
That's a much nicer space too. Like I toured over there. That, that isn't, it's a, it's a nicer space than the one they occupy right now.
Yeah, and it gives them access to, um, because it was public safety and they trained people to do physical activities. There is kind of a small gymnasium there that they would have access to. So um, it, all in all, just a good move for NEW to get out of that egg building.
Will it increase their capacity? Will any of these projects increase their ability to have more kids? I, I'm just wondering.
No, that, that would not.
Okay.
And then finally, our, our old friend deferred maintenance is back. Boring things like HVAC roofs, flooring, ceiling, tiles, windows, um, LED lighting, things like that. Um, I know you've heard this a, a million times, but I'll say just for anyone listening, the, the district budget's three and a half billion dollars a year toward um toward these sorts of maintenance projects. It's just not enough. Um, and if we budgeted more, we'd be taking stuff out of the classroom.
So it might be a good time to revisit exactly how it got to be that we can't um take care of just maintenance um, out of our, just our regular operating budget and what, what the role, um, what the the role of the state uh legislature played in that, um, back in the nineties, I think it was.
Yeah, so I mean, back in the day, school boards could just vote to set their tax rate at whatever they needed to uh accomplish what they needed to do for the year. Um, once they put revenue controls in, in the nineties, um, you no longer had that ability. Um, it requires a capital referendum to address capital needs. Uh, that's just kind of the way it is. And then on top of that, um revenue limit has not kept up with inflation. So you kind of keep, you have to keep teaching. You don't have to keep
Upgrading parking mats?
Upgrade, or um yeah, or replacing roofs at the, in doing preventative, preventative maintenance and, and things like that. That gets very, very tricky, right? Um, so the majority of our resources goes into salary and benefits. That's been, been well documented, but those, those are, those go up with inflation, just like the maintenance costs go up with inflation. If revenue isn't, isn't rising, so nat, naturally, um you know, the, the resources are transferred out of, uh, out of those sort of operational needs and into the classroom.
So referendums are our only option.
That's the only option under current state laws.
Yeah. Any questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you for that. The next is um project planning. So um, this is a report regarding the District Office Building.
Okay, so this is for the media, so you can turn your cameras on, um, just for, for the community as well. We have spent numerous people hours on this project um, in getting the facts. I just want the, the public and everybody to understand our team just wants to serve children. We don't care where we are. So this, if the board says tomorrow we had to move out of DOB, we wouldn't care. As long as we're together and we can centralize the work for the betterment of the children. That's critical. That's key. With that done and said, the Facility Task Force recommended the potential closing of the District Office Building as a cost-saving measure to address the budget deficit through operational efficiencies by relocating staff to a school building that was under capacity and no longer operating as a school. As with previous recommendations, further exploration by administration was needed. Per the board's request, administration has created a document to provide the Board of Education an understanding of the costs associated with the choice between keeping the current District Office Building versus district offices to other district-owned buildings moving us. The document that we're about to provide and show you provides a cost breakdown of the current cost to operate District Office, the real estate appraisal for the building currently where we are, and predictive cost estimates to relocate District Office in all of its functions such as the vehicle maintenance area, the paint shop, the workshop, et cetera. We have al, also taken our board on the tour of the District Office Building. With that done and said, we have a three-pronged process that we have. I'm gonna start us off. Now I'm gonna turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Dr. Tiller. Um, to start, I want to publicly thank Josh, Kinsey, and Mandy Hero. They spent, as, as Dr. Tiller had mentioned countless hours, including going through documents such as this. Board minutes from the nineteen-eighties and the seventies, looking for information to share with the Board of Education and the public regarding the history of this building. I, I won't go into all of the details, but they are provided in the project plan of the origin of this building, which began, it was built in either twenty-seven or thirty. We had conflicting documents about that. Uh, this was owned initially by the City of Green Bay. Uh, the building was transferred to the Joint City School District, uh, which is what we were referred to back in the day. Sometime between August and October of seventy-seven, with the intent that this building be used for school purposes, including but not limited to purposes related to the operation of said school district. Uh, we gave the city one dollar for this building. Pretty good. The current square footage of the building in its existence right now is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen. It's gone through iterations of renovation over the years, which are again all listed in the project plan. The Welcome Center was purchased by the school district in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, formerly the Cup of Joy. We purchased that building for a little over five hundred thousand dollars. And the Welcome Center currently houses our central registration and a member of the Transportation Department. Under current state, Kinsey, sorry, is it hard to keep up? You got it? Under current state, District Office maintains office and workspace for employees from a variety of departments. We've listed each of them again in the project planning document. Within those departments, there are two hundred and thirty-seven point two eight FTE. That's not two hundred and thirty-seven point two eight humans. It's broken up into FTE to account for the part-time staff as well as full-time staff. We've listed on the document a breakdown of what employee groups uh counts for the FTEs, ranging from program support teachers and social workers and counselors to district-wide paraprofessionals, technology team members, van drivers, bus monitors, our maintenance crews, uh, evening custodians, for example, uh evening custodians that are out in our schools actually are formerly housed here in this building, so they account for part of the FTE. Maintenance mechanics, utility workers, electricians, painters, carpenters, seam fitters, plumbers, clerical for all of our departments, administrators, and managers. Sixty-five percent of the District Office staff work primarily in this building. And then the other thirty-five percent of District Office staff work out in the schools. There is a total of two hundred and forty-two employees dedicated to or listed as District Office being their home.
What was that number again, fifteen?
Two hundred and forty-two. In addition to office spaces, the operations for the district are housed between this facility as well as ASB. Uh, we refer to it as ASB, but it's the Auxiliary Services Building out on Guns Road. Food service and procurement are out there and the rest are located in this facility, which Josh is gonna talk a little bit about. There are a lot of activities that happen in this building throughout the day that uh the public probably isn't aware of. Student registration happens here, due process meetings for students and staff, expulsion hearings, immunization clinics. Our McKenney Vento services and support are housed here. One-to-one tutoring services, interpretation services, professional development, of course, our board meetings, technology trainings. Early childhood screenings and testing occurs in this building and also multi-language, multilingual language access testing. Our Transportation Department is housed here on the first floor. We're also the safe student drop-off. A lot of people don't know that, but pretty regularly when the buses do their routes at the end of the school day, if it's not a safe drop-off, the bus will come here and drop the students off. And we have staff that regularly man that responsibility until they can get in touch with a parent or guardian. Josh, you wanna talk about the facility? Josh, you wanna talk about the facility?
Sure, Kinsey's gonna bring up, um, hopefully, a slide deck with, with some pictures just showing um, different aspects of the building that you might not be aware of. It's called the District Office Building. There's an awful lot of space here that isn't office. So if you, uh, wanna flip here. Um, this is the van garage, um, the far south side, so just south of, of the bar there, um, the, the van garage. It says ten there, but I just, thank you for the clicker. I just saw eleven in there the other day, um, so that, that garage is about four thousand square feet. Um, we've got our vans in there and then also all of our snow implements. Oh, there we go. This is the inside here. It's a, you know, a big, long, big, long building. Um, we also have our auto shop here, that's about fifty-six hundred square feet. It's where we do, um, we do automobile maintenance, small engine maintenance, that kind of stuff. Um, we try to do as much of that in-house, this is where we do it. It's got, um, multiple hoists and car lifts, welding and grinding areas, sandblasting, uh, tire changing bay, the sorts of things you'd expect to see at an auto shop. There's another picture of the auto shop, our wood shop is here, so we've got five carpenters on staff. Um, the work is typically completed here, this is where kind of the heavy equipment is and along with the the, the storage, this is also serves as a convenient place to, to distribute. So that wood shop's about thirty-eight hundred square feet. And you can see big, big saws and plainers and sanders and equipment like that. Our paint shop's about a thousand square feet, our painters work out of here, they also, um, clean at night. Um, this is where all of our, our paint storage and where a lot of the painting happens, a lot of stuff is brought here, is painted. Our plumbing shop is also here, um, quite a bit of storage for our, our maintenance and trades units. You see more, more storage, you know, we've got pretty old schools, so we have to hang on to a lot of, a lot of things because to make repairs, uh, many, many parts and pieces of our schools are, are no longer manufactured. So, um, we can store a, a lot of that. Here you see, in the basement, you see more storage, this is kind of the centralized storage, uh, for the district. This includes some curricular materials, I mean, Head Start is, uh, a lot of their storages here, McKinney Vento, a lot of that storage is here. We've got, uh, document storage, um, including secure documents. There are a number of documents that we have to keep forever, right? We need a place to put them.
Could you clarify once again for anyone else that's listening what McKinney Vento is and why we have a bunch of coats and supplies for students in there?
Yeah, sorry, thank you, uh, for catching that. McKinney Pento is, uh, it's a federal program that serves homeless, um, homeless students. Um, so every, just about every school, probably every school has a closet where they have a lot of these supplies. Um, but the, the centralized storage is here, uh, down in the basement. You see additional storage, um. You see in the middle there, that's our plan room, so that's got all of the plans for all the buildings. I mentioned the confidential and secure storage, so we're talking about things like personnel files, legal documents, business finance materials, student records, testing materials, so te- I mean, our testing materials get delivered here and they're locked up, those have to be kept secure. Um, special ed information, um, board minutes, you know, that all has to get, we have to keep that stuff. And that's all here. Our main data center for the district is also located here, so this is, this is the main hub of our wide-area network. So all the fiber from all the buildings that we service come, comes back here to two hundred South Broadway. Um, you can see on the right-hand side there, that's where the fiber's coming in. Um, and then you see our server rack, so it's kind of the central nervous system for, for the district. There are a number of professional learning spaces as well. Um, we frequently have professional learning here with at least a hundred and fifty people. Uh, that's important in a district the size to be able to accommodate professional development with, uh, with a crowd that big. We, and of course, we also use it for public meetings, so you've got rooms like this, right? That could be used for professional learning, but you know, downstairs, that's where we held, for example, the facilities, uh, task force meetings. Um, A P testing happens in, in some of these, these conference rooms, they get set up for testing various times of the year. And then with that professional development, the, the parking becomes very important as well. We've got four main lots here, so we've got the lot across the street from Broadway or from the Broadway entrance across the street. Um, we've got the, the lot in the back along Chestnut directly behind the the district office building. We've got the lot there by the Welcome Center, and then we've got the lot by the church. So basically, the district's property line starts on Howard Street, heads all the way through that church parking lot to the church, that's where the property line ends. There is one exception, and that is the bar, I'm not sure what the name of it is right at this moment.
Jekyll and Hyde or something like that?
So tha- that is not owned by, by the district, but, um, every, everything else basically going up to the church is district property. We do a fair amount of testing here, um. I mentioned A P testing, but the tester that ha- happens on a daily basis is, um, early childhood testing. So this is where parents bring their kids to get tested for early childhood, that's a three-year-old program. A program for three-year-olds, I should be more precise there. Um, and then also, the, the most common testing, and it happens on a daily basis, is, uh, is access testing. So, um, students whose first language is not English, um, that placement testing when they arrive here in the district to, to know where to put them in that E L L program.
Parents and kids are in and out of this building all day.
Yeah, they, they really are. Oh, we talked, we talked about the professional development rooms, but we also have meeting rooms. As Vicky mentioned, we are the drop-off location for, um, safe delivery of students. We do the vaccination clinics here, book fairs, um, we've got just some multipurpose rooms, yes.
Could somebody please explain to me what that means, safe student drop-off? What, what is a non-safe student drop-off?
So what happens is if a, if a bus gets to a stop and they don't feel that they can deliver the, the student safely, um, they will attempt to contact the school, take them back there. And then the school will attempt to, to contact the parents. If, if they can't get them back to the school or it's too late, they come back down here to the district office and we have staff here that work to, to get those kids, um, connected with an adult in their, in their home.
Could you give me an example, what, what, what a bus driver, I'm sorry, I just don't understand wh- what a bus driver would perceive as an unsafe situation?
Yeah, so you have a, a special ed kid, um, and you've got a, a home stop, right? Frequently, for special ed students, they don't walk to the corner to get picked up, they get picked up in front of their house. So if the, the bus driver needs to make sure that a parent is there to, to take the kid, if that parent doesn't show up, then a lot of times they end up down here. Now, this happens fairly regularly in a district of our size. Welcome Center, Central Registration, so this is typically, um, especially for our non-English speaking population, the first contact that it's had with the district, right? Because many of our registration, you, um, activities could be performed online, um, but many families may not have access or don't feel comfortable doing it online, this gives them in-person help. Um, this, this was meant to be a one-stop shop for new families to the district where they can get registered, they can set up transportation, they can set up their E L L testing and, um, all of that kind of stuff. So this is where central registration currently works, we also have a number of transportation out there. We have, uh, translation services available. Um, more than half of the visitors of the, of the visitors to the Welcome Center and this building, um, during the day do not speak English.
And I just wanna note that, um, even though our staff can use some of the spots in that parking lot, there's a whole line along that buil- the side of that building there that are designated parking for the Welcome Center, so that, um, you know, they don't come to a completely full, um, parking lot and, um, can, you know, readily park there.
Yep, that's true, we have reserved, um, parking spots for our customers at the Welcome Center. Um, a typical visit to the Welcome Center by a, by a member of the public's gonna take forty-five to sixty minutes. And here you see the inside of the Welcome Center, this was, this was just recently given a little bit of a refresh. This used to be a concert venue, um, so there was a stage and kind of nasty carpet and black ceiling tiles. There were no, um, no windows, so we, we worked, um, last year to, to provide some updates there to be a little more welcoming to our families.
Right.
And that was all done in-house, correct? Or the majority of it?
Yeah, but the majority, I think it all was done in-house. I think we had to contract out the asbestos abatement, but, um, but otherwise, all the construction was, was done in the house, the, the electrical, the flooring. Um, as I said, we have five carpenters that work here, so, and the shop is right here, so it wasn't, wasn't too far of a walk, right? To their, to their shop.
I was really happy to see the vast improvement of that space. When I saw it, it was newly purchased, and when I saw it a few weeks ago, it was, it's really a much more welcoming space than it was before and, um, more pleasant to be in.
And I think that's, I've been torn and I've voiced my concern with use of the space and things like that before, but I think having the Welcome Center meets with a lot of educational planning as far as parents' comfort level coming into schools themselves or to buildings that are large and clearly a district office building that past experiences may not have been the most positive within schools or within educational settings. And I've, I've always been kind of on the fences to, was this a good purchase? It wasn't made when I was on the board, but I think this utilizes it well. And it, the fact that it's the first welcome, I try not to say Welcome Center four times with it, but it's the first impression. And a lot of times, families are not comfortable coming into a building such as this or coming into a school for the first time. It's that institution experience and everything with that. So I appreciate what's been done with this and how it's been acknowledged with the first opportunity for some students and families to see the district, so.
Go ahead, man. In a typical week, how many families use the Welcome Center?
Depends on the time of year, it's, it's, um, it is seasonal work, right? Right now is a, a bit of a, a slow time, you, you still have visitors every day, certainly, but they're, you're not jam-packed with customers every day. Right now, um, in central registration, there's a lot of data processing going on. Um, of course, they still meet with, with families on a daily basis. Now, you get into the summer, into the summer months, heading up to the first day of school, it, uh, it gets jam-packed in there. Oh, and then we have offices here as well. Yeah.
Uh, comparables. District leadership sought information on best practices or models of efficient and effective decentralized office staffing. Uh, I reached out to Hanover Research and asked them to help locate any existing studies and they could not find any. I also reached out to the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, uh, to see if, the goal was to find out are there districts out there that have effectively and efficiently found a way to split up their central office staff? And if so, we would try to mimic that. There doesn't exist any such study. I asked C C seven to survey Wisconsin schools to see if any of them have decentralized and only one school district responded yes. So with that in mind, uh, we looked at a plan that would move the majority of our teams from district office to a second location. Josh?
Yeah, and then we, at the direction of the board, also looked at the financial impact here. So the, the budget for utilities this year is a hundred forty-seven, three hundred forty-seven, a hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars. Um, there are also some facilities needs here. We've got, um, we've got two hundred thirty-seven thousand, um, worth of needs identified as high priority, that's now, that's according to that facilities master plan, um, or master planning study that, that was performed by A T S and R. Um, looking out ten years, we have, we have about two point six million dollars of medium priority items within that ten-year scope. And really, there are no other costs associated with building, other than, of course, the people in it. So, um, we did work with a, a broker to get, um, an estimated retail value for this building. Um, they came back with a recommended list price of two million nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and then also noted that as residential conversion, you'd be looking for two point three five million. That, that two-nine-two-five is, uh, the, the building remaining as an office, a building, has more value. So we, we looked at West High School and tried, tried to figure out how, um, as, um, as Vicky said, how to, how to keep the team together, but then how to get enough people out of here to, to liquidate the building. Um, so we've looked at West High School, um, to house these operations. We figured we'd need about forty-four thousand square feet to accommodate all the people that work here and the professional development space and, and stuff like that. Um, we'd have to put in a new entrance, right? Cause you need a student entrance, you need a district office en- entrance, you'd have to be able to kind of segregate the two parts of the building. Um, we need its own elevator. And, um, and I wanted to make clear here that, that, um, this estimate doesn't include storage in the basement, which would still need to get figured out, or the, um, the operation, the operations shop areas like that paint shop, the, the mechanic shop, the van garage. Um, so that estimate came in between twenty and twenty-six million, depending on if as a part of the renovation, you're gonna have to move classrooms around, right? And do you just move the stuff that they have? Or do you renovate the, the spaces they're going into and refresh the furniture? So that's why you see a range there, so twenty million is just kind of the bare minimum to do the, to do the construction of, um. Of all those office spaces and, and cubes. Um, I'm estimating the construction of the shops at about a million dollars based on the, the square footage. It seems like, um, it's common practice for the type of buildings we would need there to estimate fifty dollars per square foot. And, um. You know, the good news is that, um, if we had to vacate these shop areas, we could take the heavy equipment with us, right? It's not like you're building an auto shop from scratch. You're building, you're building the, the outside, you're building the space, but you're, you're not. Um, having to purchase all that stuff.
That, that part wouldn't go into, um, into West though, right? That'd be.
There wouldn't be room at West, no. We'd have to find a different location. Prob- we'd probably try to fit that out at A S B if we, if we needed to. But, um, we're a little bit tight over there too.
Would that require, um, building out there?
It would require building something, no.
Okay, but we have the land for it?
It's, it's pretty tight, but, but we could probably make it work. I showed you that, uh, technology data center, um, a few different. Uh, the good news is there that the data center doesn't need to be at the district office. The district office is just where technology historically, the department was. So as things like servers came into existence, they were put here, right? Um, so we wouldn't necessarily need to move those over to wherever the, the new district office is. So we, we got quotes from on the fiber relocation for a few different locations. So that's why you're seeing a range there. Um, the engineering services would be same regardless of where we went. And the, the physical plant again depends on the destination because we're, we're gonna need, um. We're going to need redundant generators and stuff like that to, to have a. High availability data center. So you see that as between. Four hundred-ish thousand and one point five million. Um, we have, we have not yet been able to determine. Um, the ren- renovation required to, to move the stuff that's in storage here. Um, nor to. Vicky talked about that thirty-five percent of staff that are primarily out in the buildings, but they have a home base here. They still need a home base. So what does that look like? Are their needs met out in the schools currently or are additional renovations needed there? So we, we don't really know, um, then at this point, and we're, we are still awaiting a quote on a moving company to, to help move. This is an office building, things, everything needs to be disassembled. The furniture needs to be dis- disassembled, moved and reassembled, so, and we're talking. Dozens of semi trucks probably taking stuff out of here and, uh, taking them over to wherever we end up.
Just even looking at this room, um. It's got a lot of stuff in it, but also has a lot of technology in it, you know, like that would, that have to all be moved and reinstalled somewhere.
Yes.
Did you have anything else?
That's the end of, um, my stuff.
All right, uh, Andrew.
All right, so I, I hope we can find a way here to come to. Quickly come to the obvious understanding that this will not all be sorted out tonight. Uh, and probably won't all be sorted out in two weeks. I have a great deal of, of respect for everyone at the, at the table, and I've said that of, of everyone who's presenting at the table here. And with, with respect, I think what has been presented here is a very good and a very thorough. Within the box, traditional. Least disruptive method of. Uh, rather than a, um, system altering kind of, of move, okay? When I have talked about closing this building, it's about more than just savings. And maybe the, maybe the savings aren't, uh, aren't as great as we thought, and there's certainly, there's, there's none if we just move everything into a heavily remodeled. West, which I'm glad to see that there's maybe some discussion about different things like more kids going, I mean, ideally, kids would go in a school. There's a lot of things that, that aren't here, um. And I guess what I would like to consider, and I don't think it'll be able to be solved tonight. Um, maybe some departments have to be together. I mean, I think to put, um. You know, to put Josh and Vicky and Dr. Tiller in three different corners of the district probably doesn't make very much sense, but could. At, see this is gonna get picked apart if I say, say names of departments, but is, is there a. Is there a self-contained department or two? Right? That could live in Keller, because we now have a large, open building, okay? I think there's, um, you know, could storage could live anywhere, right? So, some of this, some of the storage could go to West without having to spend huge amounts of, of money to. Completely renovate portions of the school. And storage can move when building capacities change. Um, professional development, we have nice space, but it could be in a, it could be in a school, um, or elsewhere. Um, I could, you know, there's just a lot of pieces here to, to think about after this, this presentation. Um, as someone who voted no on the, the cup of joy purchase. I maybe feel differently if it is the only piece that, that stays here or one of just a couple pieces that stays here. Yes, a small centralized thing that isn't on anyone's home turf, because it's not the school that you'd be going to. I, I get, I get that. But I, I guess I would like to see at least some thought given to, could we put some people, especially people who are. If people have a home base here, but they are professionals who spend a lot of their time out in buildings and are just sometimes here. Well, could they just, uh, in groups as makes sense? Might some of them spend most, continue to spend most of their days out in buildings, program support people, but maybe. West is their home base, because we have room at West. There's so many, I guess there's just so many things here that haven't been explored yet. I think the case has been made that a traditional, get a dozen vans and move a contiguous group of people all at once. Into a place that we will remodel for it. Maybe doesn't make sense. That being said, I think there's still other ways we can do this, um. Maybe some people don't need a home base. Would some people prefer, I'm not saying for sale, would some people prefer to. Work from home when they're not in a building, especially for people who are in a building a lot of the time? I mean, the, these things have changed even in the last few years, that it's becoming a lot more common. So I would like to see us take some time to talk about some of these other things. And maybe this, I, I would still like to see this building or most of this building be sold someday. But maybe it is a phased, maybe it's a phased transition as we see what's happening with other buildings, right? Um, tank probably is not a place where you could put offices due to the age of it. But it could probably adequately host some of the storage if, if we needed to. So that's kind of where I'm coming from and I'll, I'll stop there. I don't, I'm really hoping that we're not going around in circles till ten o'clock. I, I don't think this will be solved tonight. I don't think it'll be solved in two weeks, but I think. We need, this is where we maybe get creative. I, I guess I do have to add one other thing is that I, you know, there's a mention of how many. Um, F T E are here, but if we are cutting and if we are telling, if we're gonna be telling families that we're closing the neighborhood schools. Then there need to be reductions, some, I'm not saying tit for tat or percent for percent. But there'll need to be a fewer people that work central if we're gonna have fewer buildings open. I mean, that, that will just have to happen, so that's, um, that's where I'm at with that. I appreciate the report. I think for me, it shifts to how do we do this best in a non-traditional or peace, or peace wise manner, if that makes sense.
So I have now seen probably almost every bit of the building. I cannot find an inch, a square inch of space in this building that is not being used. I am wondering why, what, why people want to close this building? When I see all this being done here, now I've seen the mechanic shop, I've seen the, the garage, I've seen the paint shop, the storage, the. Um, I, I mean, I, I've seen the offices there, it, it's not the Taj Mahal, they're not fancy offices, it's a school. It was built to be a school. I just don't understand what, um, why people think there's going to be an advantage. To closing this building. Is it falling apart? What is the problem? Can, who can answer that?
Dr. Tiller.
So I'll address that from being out in the community. A part of this is, uh, people just didn't know what we did. Uh, the envy, the, the, the not knowing piece, how, what happened in D O B. So that's why we presented, once we took the board members on a tour, we're opening up to some of the media. Uh, so that they can see, uh, so they can expose to exactly what's going on in the building. And, uh, some of it is prior history, um, people just, um, some people have some access to grind. To be honest with you, uh, there's been released from the district and just have simple access to grind. And so they just want to choose and pick to come at D O B, thinking that we don't do anything in D O B. There's things we sit up here and we are having bun buns and having chips all day long and, uh, not actually doing any work. So it's, it's, it's that whole piece that comes about in that.
Right, and then Laura.
As an elected board member, one of, reduction in the number of people here, and I'm not saying the. Let me rephrase that from reduction in the number of people here. I think people need to be in the buildings as much as possible. I think Andrew is alluding to that as well. So looking at the forty-seven point seven four teachers with P S T, social workers, et cetera, being in this building. I understand why this is listed as their central location. I think any opportunity we can have to get more people into the buildings to see the working of the school is a key part of it. I, I understand, Dr. Tiller, with what you're saying, I, I, I get your concern with the, the perspective on that. I think the more people that are in schools and are face-to-face contact with students helps our district tremendously. It helps our students, it helps our staff to see members of the central office out in the buildings on a regular basis. So if you're, you know, if you're listed as a P S T and this is your home base, I get that, that's something that we could put into the buildings as well. It's closer for them to see their students. It's not using the drive time back and forth from wherever their home office would be. And I recognize that they're not here necessarily every day, but the more people in buildings, I think is, is a positive with that. I completely value the work of everyone that's in this building and I appreciate taking the tour. And I recognize it's not feasible to sell the building, especially on, on that worth and to move everything. But thirty-five percent of the, I'm sorry, sixty-five. I'm sorry, the thirty-five percent that work primarily in schools, making sure that we've got a spot for them. Also, it, it gives them those chances to collaborate and to work in smaller settings as well, which they get here. But I think more opportunities for people to be in buildings and seeing students is definitely the plus of it. So I ca- I hope I give you my perspective, Lynn, on that, so.
Also, let me address that. Since I came on board as the superintendent, one of my statements to my cabinet was all your meetings. One hundred percent of your meetings will be out in the buildings. So nobody that thirty-five percent probably has moved up, even myself, I'm barely in this building. Cause I'm out in the community and in the schools. So we have moved, uh, majority of our meetings to where we can meet the teachers. Uh, where we can meet the administrators and where we can see what's going on in the buildings since I came on board.
I just wanted to share, I, I agree with a lot of, um, Andrew's approach to just looking at it creatively, and we talked about, I've shared that with, um, Dr. Tiller and, um. Deputy Superintendent Bayer as well as, are there other creative things that we can do? But I was also, what Lynn said, really, what is the root, um, cause or desire to change or to close D O B? And, um, for me, I, I, I just now to look at what is gonna save money, what is going to, um, be best for the district. And looking at all of the data, and I feel like this is, I still have to think on this a little bit, but I, I think, um. I had asked about, um, getting the actual people that work in the building. And so I appreciate the breakdown versus, um, they're just being the full-time equivalent employees. So I appreciate that. Um, I think I'd also like to see. Just the, um, data. So how, you know, I think, how many, uh, people are using the Welcome Center or say it's busy? But do we, how do we compare to, how many is that? Would it be different if it was at a different building? You know, the, the safe drop-off, um, for maybe Lynn and myself are like, wow, what is that? And, you know, when you share what it is, I mean, and we're saying, we have nothing to compare it to. Is that five kids a week? Is it five kids a month? Do you know what I mean? So these, just to have some sort of, um, frame of reference to look at some of the numbers and, and the data. And things that are for use of the building, and I, I agree that we need more time to, um, just look at this creatively. But I appreciate the full report and answering a lot of the questions that we did, did look, did pose earlier.
The problem I have is I have a, a work product that a lot of time was spent creating. And it's very thorough and it tells a story measured in orders of magnitude, right? So if I look at how much it costs to operate this building in utilities, a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, right? So if I say we are ultra-efficient, wherever we put these people and these functions. And we can operate those spaces at half the cost, and I take that down to seventy-five thousand dollars. And then I take that over thirty years, if we're gonna make a decision to move this building and relocate just in dollars. You got about two million, two point five million dollars to operate or do that to realize any savings over thirty years, right? So now if you add on top of that, taking a summer's worth of disruption where internal staff should be operating in schools. And painting schools and re, and pivoting them to the project of relocating all of the stuff. That's here, out to those, so absent any kind of data or study that supports that. Decentralized and, uh, central office functions actually do what you suggest and make things better. Versus traveling out and, and getting there, um, I, I'm stuck trying to say, what is the proposal? How do we get to those creative ideas that tell a story that we can take the orders of magnitude down and say, yes, we can. We, we can't just go into a school and say, hey, we have this size space plus the other spaces that we need and the storage. You're going to have to refurb and they're gonna be buildings if we're closing them. They have high F R, R F I costs already associated with them. So we have a building that's very efficient when it comes to operating expenses. And it has a couple hundred thousand dollars of maintenance that we have to perform on it. So I just, I can't imagine a creative idea that we can do in two to five million dollars. That satisfy, satisfies what we actually use this building to perform. So I, I, and absent that, then I do question, why are we even entertaining this? Because I do think that we're trying to solve an organizational problem with a building solution. And I, I, I don't buy into that at all.
That is what I was referring to when I talked about the root problem. Why is there that perspective? Why, why is this a recommendation from our consultant? Um, I think we need to bring the same energy of touring this building to all the other schools we're proposing touring. Um, and I think I agree with you, but what is the core issue? What is, what is the challenge that, um. The public, which of course we, you know, the, um, social media presence regarding closing this building, uh, I think Dr. Tiller referred to that. Uh, I think Dr. Tiller referred to that earlier as where some people are just embittered, angry, whatever it may be. Um, however, if there's a perception, what do we need to do to change that perception if there's, we have, we have actual information? What are we going to do to get to the core perception of whatever goes on in this building and is that something that we can do? And that's what I talk about with creativity. Can we bring another department in here? Can there be some switching? Can there be, um, different areas that would be, make sense to be in a school that's, that's being vacant? And looking at that to, to get to the root issue of the perception of D O B that, um. May not align with what we're actually seeing in the report. So I think I'd like to, um, get what Andrew has to say.
Um, thank you. So. So first of all, uh, I mean, I, I would, if, if it was, if it was, if it was this as written. With the twenty-some million dollars to transfer as big of a contiguous central chunk as possible to West, I would be the first to vote no. I would, I would not do that. I would not spend twenty, twenty million dollars to. Maybe save two on energy efficiency in, in thirty years. Of course, of course I wouldn't. But this, this building, right, is a, it still is a nineteen seventies. Model of an office building, uh, an educational office building, which. We've already changed it. Dr. Tiller, you've already changed it. You've already said, we aren't meeting in here anymore. So that means there, I mean, Nairo is not a hundred percent, you're using one forty-eight and, you know, some of those, some of those rooms. Which could live here or live somewhere else or could live here for a couple of years unless, and then maybe get a good offer on the building. But that's already changed something and the, the issue I think of. The issue of people, I, I think it's just not as important where, and not even, not even that's not that important, as important. Maybe people wish to have a home base be somewhere else or, or work from home. I mean, the, that is the best for people for whom it makes sense, right? Working from home is, uh, having your home office be your primary location when it makes sense for those who wish to do it. That's, that's a virtually a, virtually a hundred percent savings in that person's square footage use. And I don't know how many, I don't know how many people want to, to do that, but I know. I, I know a lot of people did it very, uh, very, very well during COVID. And I wouldn't force everyone to do that. I'm not saying force, I'm not saying take a category of people and force them to, nope, your home base now. I would never do that.
I would push back on that. I think a lot of people were quite miserable at home during COVID. And there was deep inefficiencies and miscommunication and struggle on a daily basis.
Well, that's why I wouldn't force anyone to do it, although I, I'm, I'm saying they did, I, I'm saying they adapted, I'm, I'm saying they rose to the occasion, but.
I agree, they rose to the occasion.
And many wouldn't choose it.
But it wasn't optimal, it was forced upon us.
Right, that's why I would not force it upon them to do it again.
I think when it comes to this building, if we're going to vacate this building, it has to happen in its totality. We can't, we can't have any half measures and have it be gradual. If we have, if we want to realize some kind of, um. Benefit financially, is, we have to sell it to a developer, someone who's going to want it. And so we can't have like a gradual change, we have to have it be total. Um, and, and, and to get it off of our, our books. So, um, you know, that's a, that's a very large decision. And, and will be incredibly disruptive. Go ahead, Lynn. I'm, I'm sorry, were you next? Go ahead, Lynn.
I'm still trying to identify the fundamental problem. Are people hiding out here in this building that ought to be out in school buildings? And they're, they're not because they can be here. It seems to me some people are suggesting that. Is there, i- i- is it, um, is the cost of, um, you know, the utilities excessive? And as, as James suggested, could we save a lot of money? I just don't see, understand the problem. My impression is that there's just this movement. I mean, I will tell you from the first minute I said I was going to run for school board. Some people started telling me, and you better close that building, and I don't know why. I think it's working.
One of the concerns I think people get is, a- and Vicki, you've done a great job with this. When we're, when we have open positions or people leave, the perception that. It's not perception, the, the, if we're closing schools, we, Andrew alluded to it before, you, we need to make sure that we have reduction in staff. In these areas as well, and we've done a good job with that as far as when we're looking at backfilling positions and, and not filling the positions with it. And I don't. My guess is that they're looking at this as the ivory tower. So if we have a lot of administrators here, if we have a lot of positions that aren't being reduced and they don't. They don't realize the trickle that happens with that when we have the changes in the organization chart and we, we. Change positions and we depend on the administration to take care of that, of decreasing the number of people that work here. Not necessarily exactly tied with the decrease in students, but making sure that we reduce the footprints of the number of people that work here. Because it's expensive. And I think we're doing a good job by doing that on a slow basis, on an individual basis. And I think that is their concern as part of it.
I, I just feel like reduction in force and selling a building are two totally different things. I just, unless we were so terribly overstaffed here that we ought to get rid of half the staff. And then we've got an empty building or a half-empty building. I just don't see how they are one in the same.
James and then Laura. Laura then James, okay.
I don't think I articulated it well before, but I'd like to under, what I'd like to see more about the task force recommended this, right, A S T and R. So to understand a little bit more about that recommendation and, um. If after the district looking at this much more deeply, we see that maybe it wasn't a good recommendation. Then how do we? Do we need to take the same vigilance with the rest of the buildings that are recommended by A, by A T S and R when? You know, when it comes to D O B, we, I think we have that obligation to do that.
Hang on just a second. Josh, do you remember, um, do you remember discussions with the task force around? This building and, and the, like, how did they come to the conclusion? I'm putting you on the spot, if you don't remember, it's, it was a long time ago.
I think it's a couple of things. I, I mean, they were meeting here and they were saying, th- this is not, this is a, a solid building, but it's not. It's not fancy, right? Um, and then at the time too, we were, um, I believe they were trying to solve some capacity issues. Um, particularly on the west side, so looking up how to fully utilize a building. That's, you put more people in it and it's got to be other students or employees. Um, so I, I believe that, that's how it went.
It also, if I could add, um, the discussion also centered around what would have the least impact on students and teachers. And I think that was one of the reasons that district office was mentioned initially.
James?
So I'd offer that for every recommendation that A T S and R has made. We've done additional due diligence and in one case, the math and the methodology and didn't work, right? And we made it a different decision. So, um, when I, I look at this and I apply the same framework. And the guidance that we provided, um, to kind of, that we would use to evaluate the, the recommendations. Um, none of it works, right? It, it, it doesn't address content, right? It has nothing to do with students, so I see that as a distraction, uh, away from projects and efforts. That can be put into making our, um, schools more, you know, effic- um, efficient. At, um, their, their positions. And a- again, I, I agree with you, this is all or nothing. Right? It really makes no sense if you don't vacate the entire building, to maintain this building. You're still going to pay about the same amount in utilities. So if, if we're not doing it to reduce our costs. And we have no model, uh, to go against and say, yes, it is proven that we can dis- distribute, I'm. Brian, I, I agree with you, being, um, uh, sensitive to the process of closing schools. And making sure that we right-size our administrative function, but I'll, uh, doing just some basic math. The administrative overhead of this district is running at about six or seven percent. And in comparison, I do not think that is gold-plated. I don't think that is excessive. When you look at and you extrapolate that to other organizations, six percent overhead across administrators and carpenter. And all of the trades, I, 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 I don't share in the opinion that there is this need to go in. And gut the, the staff because not all of this staff is volume-based and should be related to a declining enrollment.
I, I agree with ninety-nine percent of what you're saying. I think that there is still the opportunity for us to look at some of these positions. And, and I understand what you're saying with the all-in or all-out part of it, some of these positions can be switched into buildings. And, and I think that there's some benefit for it just in the amount of lost travel time and the efficiency of them being able to do their jobs on there. Um, and I want to stress again, I appreciate the fact that every position, when we've looked at it, we've looked at whether we need to backfill it. And, and we've been addressing that as a trickle coming through to make sure that it's right-sized as well with it. So I just want to clarify that, that I, I, I understand a hundred percent. I think there's still some, some wiggle room here to get people in buildings, so.
Andrew?
Um, yeah, if we, if we don't, if we don't close this or if we don't close this anytime soon. We can still get more people in buildings and we, we really, we really can because. Dr. Tiller, you've shifted the focus of meetings to be out in buildings, so more of people spending more of their days in the buildings. Already happening. I think there was a thought at one point in time. That the only thing that would get people to be out in the, to move meetings from here to the buildings. Is if they were forced to because there wasn't meeting space here. Uh, now there's a different way to get people to meet in, in buildings, which is a new administrative direction to meet in, in buildings more. But then, right, if I, if I live, if I, um. Okay, I'm pretty close. If I lived on the far west, uh, end of the district, you know, maybe I would like, maybe I'd like to have a, a home base for me. Be at Keller or, or at my home. And I think we're missing out on the, on the at, at my home part. I also think there's some, I also think there's some conversations, um. There's some conversations that, uh, might happen privately and about, about certain things between now. And, um, and the next two weeks, but it, it is not, it, yeah, this is not only about. Uh, not only about the money, and if, again, if it is, if it is an all or nothing based on this, this project. Then it's no, but if we move some, if we start moving some things out to buildings and this is not in as much use, I, I still. This certainly, this won't be solved in two months, much less two weeks, but is there some? Some possibility that the central, that the, the vehicle shops stay, but the core of the building. Would be, become apartments or, or something.
A developer, I, I, I have a hard time imagining a developer who purchases, going to want to carve off that prime spot. Um, and keep it as a garage. They're going to want all of it, I would think. So anyway, that's not to be decided today. I think it's a good idea right now to kind of, um, go way back a couple of years as to the why we're doing any of this to begin with. And that is because we have way more capacity than we have students. And so, so consolidating is, and, and saving money and, um, becoming more efficient. Is, is what we need to do. So moving a section into one building and then another section into another building. Uh, is, is not going to get us there. It, we need, we need to have fewer buildings. And, and if we have fewer buildings, we can offer more to our students. Um, so half of the buildings don't, you know, we can't do that anymore. We simply can't do that anymore. And, um, you know, um, this building is, is, is dark and is gloomy as it is a lot of the time. It's still deeply efficient, um, and a lot of, a lot of work happens here every day and people come and go, um. And, you know, I, I see that, you know, I'm in this building myself three or four times a week. So, um, I see it with my own eyes what's happening here, so. But, but I just want to like remind anybody who's watching this, why we're doing this to begin with. This long, hard, year-long process is to save, i- it to become more efficient. To stop hemorrhaging money into buildings that are half-full. That's not one of, this building isn't one of those buildings. Um, it isn't half-full, it's completely full and functions, um. Even though it's not very glamorous and it's not very luxurious. So anyway, that's my two cents. Anyone else want to chime in? Are, are we ready to move on? Go ahead, James.
Um, so I, I'm not a fan of looking at a proposal. Discounting it or saying it's not sufficient and then leaving an open-ended dangling question of how to get. To a point where we have two proposals to compare, right? So if there are members of the board that look at this and go, nah, not enough. I'd really like to understand how we get to enough, right? A- and not just say, let's think creatively. That's a very broad, oh, wide, wide-open statement. So if there is some way we can say. Here's what I need in, in this form, so that we can apples-to-apples kind of compare the two options. I, I would like to know that because I, I'm lost.
And then to put it to rest.
Yeah, because that's our goal, right? You, you had, um, said, Andrew, that you really would like to disposition this building. In advance of additional closing. So driving to that, not about organizational change and reducing staff, but this building's disposition.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I think the logistics part of it is that if we look at this at our next meeting. We vote to table it or file it and, and we don't need any action on that if that's what people are feeling. I think the intent on it is, has been discussed here and. I think that's, that's how we address it if we choose to at our next meeting. I, you, you, sorry, James, I, I, go ahead, all right.
I, I feel like, I feel like we shouldn't, we should have the discussion, come to a conclusion and move on. Instead of revisiting it and, and re-digging it up and put it to rest. So whatever it takes to get all seven people. To that place so where we can make that decision, because it's draining time from our staff and not a little bit of time, a lot of time. Weeks and weeks of work. I mean, just Vicki alone, but Josh, I mean, Dr. Tiller, I mean, it's been a huge. You know, Kinsey over there, it's been a huge amount of time and there's a lot of stuff waiting for them to address in the coming months. So I, I would like to see this put to rest and what, what, whatever you need to get there, let's try to address that. I would agree with you, James, on that. Um, Br- um, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Okay, so, so if this has to happen and come to an end in two weeks, then you just vote me down in two weeks. Uh, and then, you know, it won't be the first time, it won't be the last. But what I hope to do here is, uh, yes, until I saw a twenty-million-dollar price tag on. Moving a substantial number of things at, at once and putting them into West where I think there might be something even better for West. Which is more kids, which I like better. Um, you know, this is, and I'm, I'm trusting that. Putting D O B into West is not an essential part of keeping West a full-size, fully-functioning high school. Because, am I correct that that is a, that ship, that is a final answer?
I think there's nobody at this table who wouldn't like to see West full of kids.
Not, not like, not like. Did we, have we decided that West will be a full? Not not like, not like, did we, have we decided that West will be a full-size high school, not a. Not something that's a K twelve, but maybe a seven twelve, but it will be at least seven hundred kids. Is that decided or not?
I think that we're off the. We're, I don't think it's relevant, but I can tell you, Andrew, I think that West needs to stay open as a school. So I think that we're we're jumping out of what was posted on here. Um, and I see Melissa's picture up there. I don't know if she's waiting to say something on it, but I think we're, I think we're. Dangerously close to switching what our agenda.
No, I don't think so because moving West uh part, it is integral part of right, right in here, right in here is money to the money to move it. Into West, so. If this isn't, but hey, if 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 that's where everyone else is with West. That was, you know, that was one of my worries was do we have to do this to keep West a full high school? If you're telling me no. I maybe don't need to vote. I maybe don't need to vote to close this building or otherwise I have to vote no on every other school closure. I might not be there anymore. But. I don't wanna see the concept. Of more people out in buildings, putting home bases out in buildings where it makes sense. Working on a process where we give people who wish to a chance to work from home if they want, cuz that question has not. It's not been asked at a really wide level, I don't think. Maybe some are doing it already. I don't wanna, I don't wanna pass a business as usual, this place is never gonna change motion in in two weeks. I don't need to pass, uh, we're closing this place down motion in two weeks. Uh, that's where I'm at.
Um, James, oh, I'm sorry. Melissa, did you wanna chime in?
No, I just wanted, Brian, did you have a question? I I agree with you that we're getting off topic. For what it's worth.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for keeping us on track. James.
I appreciate that. I I really do. And what I think we need to as a board get better at. Is providing all of the characteristics of the research that we want the district to do because it's. It's frustrating to get to this point where we only have facts around one option. And then concepts around another option because they're not comparable. Because it's not without cost to do some of the things that were suggested. There's gonna be renovations and others. To conform new buildings or existing buildings for functions. So we just have to get to a point where we don't get to the end of a research project. And then introduce, well, let's start over with options B, C, and D. If we can at least get better at providing everything and all the options that we want them to present. We can get done and in two weeks, we wouldn't be voting Andrew down. We would be having a really legitimate conversation about multiple options.
Brian.
So procedure question, if we propose a resolution to close DOB and then fails. Then we've taken a stance on, we've taken a position on it. Is that something that we can have posted for the next meeting or would we need to wait a month and a half on it? And Melissa, there's my question. Did you catch it? Okay.
I got it, sorry. Um. It can, we can post that for next week. We just have to post the recommended, we have to post the recommended motion or recommended action.
I will come up with an item on there and get it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm afraid that if we vote, if we if we vote, if we take a resolution to the table in two weeks to vote it down. I think that's gonna, that's going to have the effect of killing a lot of ideas before they're ever considered. And and it will also mean maybe, maybe if there is enough transition in how people work. That this is valid, that is valid to close this and sell it in three years. I don't want our board to have essentially killed that or strongly prejudiced against future action.
I think then you better be prepared to offer and request from our staff very specific things. So that they can address those and we can move on. But just like a vague, um, we need to have more people out in buildings. Um, you know, how do we do that? Like, like.
I I'm not asking for any, I I don't know that I'm, I I don't necessarily intend to, I, well, I have a conversation with Dr. Tiller one-on-one, but. I don't intend to ask the staff for a new plan in two weeks. I would be fine not voting, I would be fine not voting on anything about DOB in two weeks at all.
Lynn.
One thing that I've never heard mentioned, and it occurs to me that we could make a really, really big mistake. We could close this building and think that having people out in schools is really far superior. And ten years from now, people could say, oh, my God. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a central administrative site? I find tremendous value in having this site. And I've lived in places where if you have to drive to the central office, it's gotta go, it's an hour in traffic and blah. This is not gonna happen in Green Bay. I can drive here in ten or fifteen minutes from the east side. And I see the meetings going on and the the clinic where people could come and get their COVID shots. I think. We pro, if we've got all these people out of here and put them into school buildings, ten years from now, we would regret it.
I was thinking the other day, what's, what do we have in town? What organization do we have that's comparable? And I was thinking, what if we decided like City Hall should just be broken up and sold? Yeah. You know, like, how how does that, what would that look like? All and people who go to City Hall to get all the services they need and all the help they need or have, you know, uh, city council meetings or whatever. In a central location, I mean, I I've never heard anyone suggest that we should sell that building, which is, I'm sure, on valuable land. And um break it up and split it up into other buildings. And that's the only comparable kind of scenario I I could come up with. I I don't know who, go ahead.
That is not even close to comparable. Come on. There's. There's, there would obviously be, there's no, like, there's no kid, oh, I don't need to. Like I said, I don't need to vote to close this place and I'm not asking for a lot of administrative time to come up with. New stuff. I'm hoping to gradually evolve people being in buildings more, but. The the the, one of the key concepts that has come up about this is the idea of. Taking people who may um. May very much want to have the opportunity to be out in in buildings more and and can't because of the structures. That that doesn't apply to the city. Like, there's no, there's no, um, there's no departments. There's no departments in the city that 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 really applies to and the ones that it might apply to do actually. Live separate from, live separate from City Hall.
I'll tell you what I'm not willing to do. I'm not willing to have staff do all this work.
I don't want, I don't want.
I'm speaking. I'm not willing to have staff go through all this work. And not have a resolution. We need to move on. We need to get this done, make a decision one way or another and move on. That's, that's my opinion about that. Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, so we have all this information from the staff. Is it appropriate to ask? What their recommendation is?
I think they're hoping to stay neutral on that. Go ahead, Brian.
We're an elected body. We serve a three-year term. The voters have entrusted us to do what we view as best within the district. So I understand concerns that ten years down the road, other governing bodies will have to deal with that as well with it. What I had mentioned before is coming up with a resolution or a motion to either to put this to rest. And if it passes or fails, it's based on the decision of the people that are here right now. That have been elected to represent the Green Bay School District as our Board of Education. So we either have to make the decision or we don't, just like we need to make the decision on school closures that may or may not be the best decision. Just like the school board ten years ago, need to look at enrollment and look at the best decision there. I can't tell you what's gonna happen ten years from now. I can't tell you what's gonna happen three years from now. But we've been elected to take a position on things and this is a big issue with it. So if we vote that it doesn't, that we keep it open, then that's, that's what we do.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Laura.
I think the data, the additional data asked for isn't anything that would change the decision or how I would. View this, this um proposal, but I think it's good data to have. I think we 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 do need to know how many people are using the Welcome Center. I mean, we need good um quantitative data about who we're serving. And I don't think that would be too incredibly difficult to just kind of keep track of that for the receptionist or whoever's there. But I think things like that and how many students we're getting is just good data to have. And I think it helps to justify why we would maintain and keep it open other than. It's a nice space and it makes people feel welcome, but how many people are we actually reaching? And then also would help us decide where we need to focus efforts. Do we need to get more people um knowledge of the center? Um, so that's what I was thinking of for um more data, and I don't think it's anything that has to be done in the near. Next two weeks, it wouldn't change if the if the dollars, if the creative solutions. Um, are not gonna change the huge amount of dollars, it wouldn't change my view on it. But I do think we have to have creative solutions and um. Changing the perception of the district, maybe the culture of the district, and I think Dr. Tiller has taken some steps. By being out in the community, by creating um some expectations and that I think is going to take. Time, but it will eventually change the community perception of the district or whatever it may be in this building.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, just just to be really clear, I'm gonna use an example of something that wouldn't even be remotely close to happening, just to make a point. But in this restructuring, we're not, we're not voting to keep Preble. Right, we're not, we're not taking affirmative vote to keep Preble. Preble just obviously is a full school. And would never have been considered for, right, for restructuring. Uh, it's a. You know, what I, what I think, what I'm, what I think I'm hearing here is that there is a need by some people. Not not just to say we're not gonna, we're not gonna rush a closure of DOB or we're not, we're not. There's obviously not consensus to close DOB, right? What I think there is, is that I I think. I think there's people very nervous about how about change that a motion to uh of. If we vote to kill the concept. That of closing DOB that. That does something different than if we just say, yep, this isn't the time. And and I think the creative idea, people will point to the resolution that passes in two weeks. And tell me, no, Andrew, we already decided we're not, DOB is gonna, there, a a vote. A no vote on a resolution to close DOB will be seen as a ringing endorsement of. Business absolutely as usual, and a lot of people will point to that when anyone tries to change anything about it.
Go ahead, Brian.
I think when we vote on a resolution, that that's what we're voting on and we can't, we can't take into consideration. The intent that people see on it, we can't say, okay, if we are voting to keep DOB open, that means we're. Closing West or we're shifting anything else. All that vote shows is that the school board has taken a vote to. Not close the district office building or to propose it, to close it, and that failed. I I understand the concerns, but I think if we start looking at jumps of where the perception is off of one vote, we're gonna, we're gonna be chasing our tail the whole time. I I appreciate your view on it, but that's the only stance that we have taken or will have possibly taken as an official stand, so.
James.
We took exactly that vote with Leonardo da Vinci. We took a vote to take it out of consideration from the master facility plan. And thereby removing all direction from the district to conceive of or get creative around that school. So I I I would want us all to go in wide open that. The resolution in my view would be to remove it from consideration as part of the master facilities plan. And therefore, the district is relieved of the duty to explore alternatives for this building. So if that. It affects your vote, but that's what I think is meaningful about the resolution is. We have no expectation that they're doing anything to consider alternatives for this building. And that, I think, deserves a vote to see where we all stand. If it passes, then. You know, by all means, you know, start directing the districts to determine what those creative ideas are.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that discussion. That was very interesting and um. Very thorough, so um, we're gonna move on, folks. Um. We got some policy, um. Some, I I don't know, Melissa, are you gonna cover that? Oh, no, I think um Mike Freeze, is he? Oh, is Mike here?
Hello.
Hello, hello, Mr. Freeze. Can we go through these rather quickly?
Uh, you bet, you bet.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for your patience tonight, everyone. I know it's a lot of, a lot of big topics on the agenda.
No, thanks for your patience.
Oh, no, absolutely. Um, so uh, we hope that this is fairly straightforward. Um, uh. These two policies with updates, part of our continuous improvement effort within the HR department. Um, our HR manager, Lindsay Seela, has been reviewing our processes to make sure that. That the department processes are aligned and consistent with our legal requirements, with our handbook language and board policy. In consulting with Melissa and the legal team, the recommendation was that to ensure our processes are accurate and appropriate. Um, that these po policy and the rule get updated. Um, tonight, uh, these, the the recommended changes are so that the policy and rule work together to make sure that any. Uh, district employee who is driving is deemed safe to do so. And just to continue to ensure that our students are therefore also kept safe if that driving includes driving students, so. Uh, five twenty-three point one one, focusing on employee alcohol and drug testing. Simply adds into the policy our general practice that when current employees are scheduled to drive, for instance, district snowplows. Um, that the approval process to be cleared to do such does include. Uh, the drug testing, as you might imagine, getting called into plow after hours on the weekend based on snowstorm requires that we're all very, very safe. Um, and we just want that formalized in policy. That's a practice we've been following, but it wasn't listed in uh the rule, so we thought it would make sense to add there. We've also been added in the testing requirement for other employees that could be um. Uh, requesting or being asked to be approved to drive students for some reason. So then that corresponds with seven fifty-one point five, which goes through the. The actual process and protocol for becoming cleared to uh use alternative vehicles to transport students. In other words, uh, right now, if somebody wants to be approved, uh, they would be um proving that they're safely licensed. If they're gonna use their own car, their car gets checked. And then when they go in for uh the health and fitness check, uh, which they already have to do at the pre-employment clinic, they require a lift test. Make sure that your hands and feet skills allow you to be safe as a driver, um, past the physical. We would add in the drug screen part as well. So again, just hopefully to clean up this process and hopefully. Um, it makes sense to everybody and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
Mike, regarding the uh, the plow drivers and the CDL part, does that match up with um other municipalities? Like, I know the city would probably have guidelines with plow drivers, just making sure that we're consistent with it, that you know?
Uh, it's a great question, Brian. I actually don't know how that aligns with uh city expectations. I can tell you that it's it's based on Department of Transportation standards for passage, so I would assume so, but I can look into that uh for you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I think we're fi- uh finished with that part. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Yep. Um, all right, uh, a little bit of housekeeping here. I don't know who's all going to be going to the convention in January. Um, I'll be going down Tuesday night, um, well, to to do the policy and resolution. Uh, pre-meeting, if you still want me to go ahead and do the. Um, the big part of the convention where we vote on resolutions. I've been doing it for, I don't know how many years now. Um, and uh, but if someone else wants to take that up and sit through the assembly and. I'm the only one going to the convention? Oh, well, then I guess it will be me and I guess, I guess, um, the thing we're supposed to decide tonight would be who would be an alternate. And um, if no one else is, I guess I'm, I better stay healthy. Yeah.
If you have an emergency, I will go for the, at least the day of the. The um. Delegate Assembly.
Okay, all right, so um, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Um, let the record show, we're adjourned. Opposed, nay? Um, let the record show, we're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org. For more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero. Four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.